Call the regular meeting of the Pennington County Commission Order.
Yeah.
There's agendas for those in the audience on the back wall. Speaker request forms also there if you'd like to speak on any particular matter before the commission today, ask you to silence your cell phones, and I would call on Commissioner LaCroy to lead us in a moment in silent reflection and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner LaCroy. Next item is review and approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second for Commissioner LaCroy and Commissioner Lassiter to approve the agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the consent calendar. Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board mover or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items: approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of July 20, 2021; approval of the minutes of the special planning work session from July 23, 2021; and number seven is to authorize the sheriff's office substitution vehicle purchase of three Dodge Durangles from Liberty Chrysler Center in Rapid City, South Dakota, on state contract number 17345 for a total purchase price of $104,010 in place of three Chevrolet Talvows previously authorized on December 15, 2020 due to a manufacturing availability.
Are there any members of the public that wish to have any of these items removed from the consent calendar for discussion? Any members of the commission wishing to have any of these items removed? Hearing none, I take a motion to approve consent calendar.
So moved.
Second.
I got a commissioner by commissioner, I got a motion by Commissioner Lassiter, second by Commissioner Hancock to approve. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the regular agenda items. So Dustin Willett, you're up.
Good morning, Chairman Drew, members of the commission. Dustin Willett, emergency manager for Rapid City in Pennington County. I was asked to come in and provide another COVID update brief similar to what we'd done over the previous year, basically. So we still have a significant reservoir of an infectious pathogen, and we still have susceptible hosts. You put those two together, and that means we still have COVID-19 moving through our community. I'm sure you're all well aware of the headlines in the news, both locally and across the country. I'll just start with some numbers to make sure we're all aware of where we're currently sitting. So active cases in Pennington County. The other thing that I should preface this with is Department of Health has moved from daily reporting to weekly reporting. So we get updated numbers from the South Dakota Department of Health every Wednesday, meaning that we're right at the end of the most recent data set. We'll get a new data set tomorrow, so all of these numbers are what happened last week. That's relevant because a lot can change in a week, and we would anticipate that a lot of these numbers that we're dealing with last week are probably moving in a direction that we wouldn't want them to move. So fully anticipate that our numbers tomorrow will be more concerning than even this data set that we're going to go over today. So active cases last Tuesday were, in Pennington County, were 87, and that was an increase of 22 cases over the previous week with a calculated percent positivity rating on tests of 6.7%. To put that in a little perspective, if we go exactly one year ago to this date, last August, we had almost 1,000 cases in the county, so we had 946 cases and a change of 35 cases. So the concerning part of where we're at currently, the 87 and the 22, one is certainly our trajectory's on the way up. We were down in the 40s, now we're back up into the 80s, so we're moving the wrong direction, and that increase in 22 cases over the previous reporting period is concerning as well. It's just indicative that the virus continues to move through our community. All total, we've had 207 deaths attributed to patients who had an address in Pennington County, and all total since this began, Pennington County has again reported a total of about 14,000, 14,098 total cases of COVID-19. So some more statistics moving into vaccinations specific to Pennington County. The Department of Health has partial vaccination of 41,000 and change, fully vaccination of 34,000 and change. There's some numbers from the VA for the Black Hills region, and then some information from Oiata Health as well. Basically, when you extrapolate all that, and there's certainly some guesswork here, we don't have perfect data sets for Pennington County. We've got some information for the state, but when we look at those different data points, Department of Health, IHS, and Oiata, and VA, for the Black Hills area or Pennington County, we're probably somewhere around 52,000, 53,000 for one dose and 45,000, 46,000 for fully vaccinated. When we break the statewide percentages down in terms of who's partially vaccinated, who's fully vaccinated, about 53% of the state is fully vaccinated, about 58% of the state is partially vaccinated. We did really, really good when the vaccines came out. Everybody that wanted a vaccine was in line. We had that tiered system for people to be able to get their vaccine. We did a really good job of vaccinating at that time our most vulnerable population, who are the elderly, and worked back from there. So we did a really, really good job out of the gates. South Dakota as a state has fallen behind some of the more desirable national averages for vaccinations, so again, we're down in that low to mid 50% as a state. In Pennington County, we've fallen a little bit farther behind. So again, we're looking at around 46, 47% as my best guess for partially vaccinated and probably around 40% for fully vaccinated within Pennington County. Basically, what that means is there's still a whole lot of folks out there who are certainly susceptible to having a serious case of COVID-19. I think it's important to acknowledge that vaccinations aren't a guarantee against contracting the COVID-19 virus, although they certainly do help dramatically. Where we really see the impressive numbers are, again, as we talked about over the last year, keeping you out of the hospital and keeping you from developing serious illness and keeping you from dying. So if you've been vaccinated, your chances of having, of being hospitalized and potentially having a fatal case of COVID-19 are very, very low. I think the last number set that I looked at literally was 99 to the three digits, so 99.999% chance of not being hospitalized for those that have had their vaccination. So a couple of big things in the news, and even starting today, August 2nd, and then another implementation point of August 5th is DOD facilities in Ellsworth Air Force Base. So starting on August 2nd, which I believe is today, is it not? Yesterday, starting yesterday. So folks on DOD facilities, regardless of vaccination status, will be wearing masks indoors on all DOD facilities. So families, service members, regardless of vaccination status, if they're inside on a DOD facility, they'll be required to wear masks. Starting on the 5th, active duty members from Ellsworth will be required to wear a mask regardless of vaccination status, inside or outside, when they're off base if they're not able to maintain physical distancing. So if they're not able to maintain good physical distancing, they'll be required to wear a mask when they're out in the community. That's been triggered by, and this is again, we're dealing with a week-old data set. So the current CDC map of community transmission, and that goes from low to high, the current map for CDC has Pennington County listed as high. We're in the absolute top listing of the CDC's community transmission. If you extrapolate that to the whole state, South Dakota isn't as bad. Pennington County within South Dakota is listed as high. So when we look at that guidance from the CDC that says, when you're in a community with high rates of transmission, we recommend even those vaccinated to be wearing masks, Pennington County's on that map. According to the CDC's data, that should apply to us, per their guidance, per their guidance. So that's where we're at with that. They calculate that based on seven-day blocks, and there's two different ways they look at that, cases per 100,000, and then percentage of positive cases. And the percentage of positive cases is where we're falling into that because their threshold for cases per 100,000 is over 100, and I don't think South Dakota, or certainly Pennington County, is not there. But a 10% increase from one week to the next in positive testing will kick you into that category as well. So I'm relatively certain that's where Pennington County makes that particular threshold according to the CDC.
So Dustin, is it just Pennington County, or does it?
There's a handful of counties. I don't have that pulled up in front of me.
But it's not the entire Black Hills.
No, a couple of our surrounding, there's a little patch of red right around here, so a couple of our surrounding counties are red as well, and then some on the eastern side of the state. But South Dakota as a whole is not, has not met that threshold. There's just a few counties. Pennington County happens to be one of them, and there's a couple neighboring counties that were red as well, but I don't recall which ones specifically. I can send you the link for the map if you'd care to look at that. In terms of, again, our concern from the get-go has been, don't break healthcare, and we came darn close, unfortunately, during our biggest spike. The hope is that we don't ever approach that again. Currently, there are 10 confirmed COVID patients in Monument Health, which is up from where they've been. That's starting to trend upwards. We hold true to the data sets that are being reported across the country, meaning that most, if not all, of the hospitalizations that we see typically are in the unvaccinated. The folks that are getting the more serious case of disease that are requiring hospitalization tend to be in that population that are unvaccinated. That's just a fact, just the way it is. The other big thing with COVID-19, obviously, is we're getting ready to start the school year, and there are certainly some mandates on the, you know, some state-level positions on what will be required or not as we move forward in the school year. And Rapid City area schools, our largest school district in Pennington County, certainly has some very well-published guidance on how they're going to approach the school year and what they're going to do. The highlights of that are visitors to schools will be required to wear masks, kids and, or students and staff, it's optional. They will not be requiring vaccine, they will not be requiring any type of documentation or proof of vaccine in the school district. The one thing that's part of that expectation, at least with Rapid City area schools, is that parents, staff, and students self-screen daily for concerning signs and symptoms. So that onerous is put back on the families and the students to make sure that, and it speaks to what we've been talking about for well over a year, if you're sick, stay home. Doesn't matter if you're sick with COVID, doesn't matter if you're sick with a cold, doesn't matter if you're sick with the flu, if you're sick, stay home. So those basic infection control principles, you know, wash your hands and don't come to work when you're sick, are going to hold true for pretty much all time. So those are still very, very germane and pertinent instructions for folks. When we look at the, I've always talked about the CDC ensemble, where they take multiple different predictive models and try to graph out where they think infections are going to go in a given county, and it's relatively accurate out about two weeks. The CDC ensemble model has us pretty much flat for the next two weeks. So we'll see, we'll see if the weekly reporting from Department of Health bears that out, but the CDC ensemble model has us pretty much flat for the next two weeks. So that's not horrible news, we'll just hope that that holds true. With what I opened with, with what I started with, you know, Pennington County is on the lower side of vaccine uptake. We have, we have some vaccine hesitancy in our community, I would imagine for a whole variety of reasons. The virus is, and I've said this again from the beginning, viruses do what viruses do. They look for susceptible hosts, and they continue to mutate, and they continue to work through available hosts and continue to mutate until they can't find a host to live in. So as long as we have large numbers of unvaccinated folks and a large reservoir of infectious pathogen in our community, it will continue to move through our community. That's just where we are currently sitting at. I'll end and then certainly stand for questions by saying that, you know, when we, when we are facing the threat of flooding, EM advises folks to move uphill. When we're threatened by tornadoes, EM advises people to move to an interior room in the lowest floor of a structure. When thunder roars, EM advises people to go indoors. And when we have a dangerous infectious pathogen moving through our community, EM recommends that if you're able to, get vaccinated, and certainly continue to follow basic infection control principles. And with that, I'd be happy to stand for any questions with the caveat that I'm certainly not an expert or an epidemiologist, but I'll answer what I can.
Questions for Dustin.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Rosskinack.
Just one, Dustin, is this the original virus, or is it a combination of the original virus and this new strain that's out there that you're finding in Pennington County?
Yeah, so South Dakota does sentinel monitoring, meaning we don't test every positive case to figure out what variant it is. We just don't do that. That being said, every variant of concern that's out there has basically been detected in South Dakota, and many of those variants of concerns have been detected in Pennington County. You know, there's a lot of talk, there's a lot of media these days about the Delta variant, and taken with a grain of salt, it's just like, unfortunately, we'd love to make decisions based on good, solid, irrefutable facts and known settled science. And when you're dealing with a novel pathogen, and one year is still a novel pathogen, it takes a long time to understand infectious agents, and we're not there yet with COVID. We do know viruses mutate, COVID continues to mutate. The numbers that are out there seem to indicate that there's not much disagreement that the Delta variant is much more transmissible and actually is resulting in more serious illness for those that contract it. And those two things together are concerning. The more concerning piece, and again, this is not something necessarily that has happened or is happening, or even will happen, but the concerning piece of the way viruses work is the longer this virus circulates in our population, the longer this virus continues to infect large number of hosts, it simply increases the chance that it will continue to mutate. That's what viruses do. And so the scary part of all this is that there's always the chance that we end up with a mutation that our vaccines aren't as effective against. And so every day, it's kind of a roll of the dice, hoping that any variants that continue to come out will still be constrained or attenuated by the current vaccines that we have. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
Good enough.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hancock.
I guess that's what I was going to ask you, because I heard even if you got the shots, the Delta variant or any mutations will not be covered from the shot that was given before. So it might help, but they don't know for sure. So is that the truth, or?
So the numbers that we currently have are, again, that to the three digits. So if you are vaccinated, any variant, Delta included, you have a 99.999% chance of not developing a serious illness and being hospitalized or dying.
Okay.
Does not mean you will not contract it, does not mean that you can't be contagious, hence the CDC's current guidance on high transmissibility and masking. Those that are vaccinated may have enough, there are studies that show that they can have a very high viral loading of COVID-19, be asymptomatic, be able to spread the virus even after they've been vaccinated, but they don't get sick. We get back into that whole asymptomatic transmission, asymptomatic, there we go, asymptomatic piece of that. So no, the vaccines that we have don't guarantee that you won't get COVID, although they are very, very effective, very high percentages.
So they're saying that because the ones that are in the hospital, they're asking or they're being able to tell that they had the shot or they didn't have the shot?
Yes.
That's how they're telling that? If you had the shot, it's not so bad, and the ones that didn't have the shot?
Correct. The people that we see in hospitals are unvaccinated across the country.
Okay, but there's still vaccinated ones in there?
Not very many in the hospital at all.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Commissioner LaCroy.
Dustin, thanks for your report, and, you know, I really appreciate the part where you said the recommendation from emergency management is to, is for vaccination and how you presented that. I believe as a political entity, you know, it's not, doesn't mean anything from us. In fact, people probably shy away anytime a political body recommends something, and from my understanding, more doctors and people from the community are doing more push for the vaccination, which they should, you know. I know for myself, even in my household, I don't, I do the same explaining as you do, is that it's not going to prevent it, it's going to, you could end up not being in the hospital severe, but that's a fight I don't fight. It's an individual choice, just like I believe this commission did when we did the masks and so forth, we left up the departments to do what they needed to do with consensus. So, but I just wanted to communicate that I appreciate those recommendations, and I believe if we want to get to that point, it's going to have to come from the community drive, not from a political side.
Yeah, I agree. Last year, the best tools that we had in our toolbox were basic infection control processes. The best tools that we had last year were wash your hands, socially distance or physically distance, and be cognizant of mask use. I stand before you today, and the best tool we have to limit this in our community, the best tool we have to fight COVID-19 are the vaccinations. And it's not for me to tell somebody to do it or not to do it, just like I can recommend somebody runs out of a burning house, but I can't make them run out of a burning house. We have COVID-19 in our community, we'll continue to have COVID-19 in the community. The vaccinations are our best defense, and people will have to make their own choices.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Rosskinack.
One question, and it's off of Commissioner Hancock's question. Those that are in the hospital that are unvaccinated, do we know how many of those, percentage-wise, that actually had COVID previously, or these individuals that may not have ever had COVID?
I don't have the, I don't have that percentage. I know anecdotally across the country that, I shouldn't say I know that, I've seen reports that immunity acquired from a COVID-19 infection, there are some studies that seem to indicate that that immunity is not as strong against some of the variants of concern as the artificial immunity that we get through vaccinations are. I don't think that's settled science. I think there are studies on both sides of that. I don't think we can say that with any certainty, but there are certainly studies that seem to point in that direction, that vaccinated immunity looks like it may be stronger than post-infection immunity, especially when we're dealing with some of the variants. But I'd be careful, I offer that with, again, the caveat of I don't know how settled that is.
Thank you, Dustin. Appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is elevate Tom Johnson, who's going to give us an update. I don't see Tom in attendance. But we will move on and go to number 10. Cindy Moller.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. The first item that I have on the agenda is a new retail on-sale liquor license with Sunday sales for RNJ LLC. And, excuse me, according to ordinance, if they do not have a sufficient structure, liquor license isn't to be issued, so we're recommending denial on that. And also planning and zoning gave you a memo on the issues that they're having with the property at this time. And I don't know if.
Move to deny.
Got a motion from Commissioner Hancock to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second from Commissioner LaCroy. Further discussion? Any members of the public wishing to address this issue? Back to the commission.
There's someone in the public.
Any further comments? Want to address it? Come on forward.
I'm Justin Eisenbrow of RNJ LLC, and the issues that I had with planning and zoning, we've all been addressed, and they put on a cease and desist order on my stormwater permit. They've since released it. I can go back to doing dirt work. I've corrected everything that I was at fault with, and I don't see a reason not to give me a liquor license.
You have a facility?
We're in the process of building one. We're, we got to get our dirt work done and build our facility first.
My opinion would be that you need the facility built and ready to go before you apply for the liquor license.
I agree.
In my opinion.
So we could potentially spend a million dollars on a facility and not get a liquor license?
Potentially, yes.
That addresses my concern, so thank you.
Any further comments for the commission? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Just to follow, I should have done this while he was talking, but can those fees, once he gets the building built, be transferred over for a new one? He had to pay for the license and so forth.
I presume the fees that have been paid can be returned. Cindy?
Yes, upon denial, we will return the fee for the license.
I guess so. Item B, county budget, Cindy.
Yes, this is addressing the 2022 budget, and as we move towards the final budget, there are things that we do need to consider. The first one is the error that I made in leaving out the jail equipment lease payments to the original base budget. So I would ask for a motion to increase the 2022 budget as follows: the general fund principal kitchen lease budget in the amount of $118,954, and the general fund interest kitchen lease payment budget in the amount of $4,956.
So moved. I got a motion by Commissioner Rosskinack. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner LaCroy. Is there any public comment in regard to this? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The other two items that need to be discussed are the secondary requests and then the requests for new FTEs, and I just felt that was going to be a much longer conversation and discussion than what we would want to have at a regular commission meeting, and so I did request that you schedule a special meeting for August 10th at 8:30 to work on finalizing the 2022 budget.
Okay, that day does not work for me.
Okay.
I don't know if it'll work for you.
I've got a conflict as well.
Okay, I'll take suggestions.
So that's, 10th is a Tuesday. I guess everybody needs to look at their calendars.
It looks like I got the rest of the week open.
So would the 9th, would Monday work, the 9th?
The 9th would work.
For me, yeah.
I do hair Monday.
And I have a staff member short on Monday, so that makes it a little bit harder for me.
Next Friday, you're done. How about Thursday, Gary?
I'm not back until Thursday night. Early Tuesday morning, I get back, late Thursday night.
We can do it Friday or not? Anybody have a problem with Friday?
I'm good with the 13th.
Yes.
I'm good, as long as it starts about 8:45, just because I have a doctor's appointment at 8:00. But I mean, if it's about 8:30, 8:45, I can, I can make it.
Lloyd, does that work for you?
Friday, the 13th sounds appropriate.
I do not agree with you, Mr. LaCroy.
I do not agree with you, Mr. LaCroy.
Ron, does that work for you?
I'm, I'm good.
Bring your black cat and anything else.
Does that work for you? What, what time? Nine o'clock. Does that work?
Aye, yep.
Nine o'clock on, uh, so I take a, a, a motion to set that.
So move. Second.
I've got a motion and a second to set a special meeting for August 13th at 9:00 AM to work on finalizing the, uh, 2022 budget. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Cindy, thanks for laying this out.
Item 11, Sheriff Kevin Tone.
Morning, Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff. And previously sent you a memo, if you had a chance to digest it or not, but we're looking at, uh, you know, crisis we have, we're trying to hire correctional staff and we detailed out some of this previously. We came and talked to you about increasing the steps from five to nine for different positions for hiring. Met with Sandy and John over in the HR and talked this through a little bit in terms of impact on our office and of course, other impact on the county. And, uh, we kept it very narrow. It's very specific to just correctional officers. And you can see some of the data in there from 2019, our number of applicants have decreased and recently went through the exercise, trying to fill 12 positions and we had five applicants to interview. You know, correctional positions are just hard to fill, um, both in the state and nationally. It's not specific just to Pennington County. It's a unique work environment and of course, like a lot of our stuff, we're 24/7, 365. So it means you give up weekends and nights and holidays and other stuff. So, um, what we've proposed is a, um, hiring bonus, if you will. And we looked at, um, a wide variety of agencies. Some offer a few thousand, some offer 10,000. You get into the medical field, of course, we've talked about our nurses. That's up in upwards of 30, $40,000 recruiting bonus that some places are offering. And, and we took the approach of spreading it out over, you know, 18 months. You spread it out over too long of a timeframe and it kind of dilutes it down to where it doesn't have as much of a impact. So we come up with a formula of, you know, as laid out in here, um, you know, a thousand, thousands, thousands, and then a thousand over 18 month period. And, uh, so anyway, it certainly stands for any questions. I don't know if John had any feedback on it too, but we, I guess we've met with them and talked it through.
Sure.
And this would come out of our existing budget dollars, so.
Yeah. One second, Ron, and I'll call on you.
Yep.
Uh, so Kevin, uh, explain to us, how many correctional officers do you have? Or how many FTE positions do you have for those? And maybe give us. And then maybe give us.
120 total.
Okay, and then maybe give us just a little bit of an indication of the last 12 months, the last six months of how many you've gone through.
You want to come address that stuff?
Oh, Stephanie.
Introduce yourself to.
Steph McCoy with the Sheriff's Office. Uh, in 2020, we hired 21 correctional officers between the Juvenile Services Center and the Adult Facility. Historically, we do hire more bodies at the jails simply because we have more bodies that work there. We have approximately 88, 86 correctional officers at the jail and right around 40 at the Juvenile Services Center. Um, we run anywhere between 25 and 40% turnover in those positions. So in 2020, we hired 21 bodies. 13 are still currently employed. To give you an idea, it takes about nine weeks to train up a correctional officer. So they could be working for us for a few months before they're doing anything that we really need them to do. And then this year, year to date, we've hired 19 and 14 are still employed. So the intention of this being spread out is hopefully to attract some attention to get more applicants and then incentivize them to stay. Oh, maybe just one more month, they'll get a thousand dollars. Well, I'm here 18 months. Well, this is a pretty good job. I think I'll stay and it'll be a career, so.
Commissioner Ross Kinnock.
Yeah, that was my question. I understand, you know, I, I like the concept. I think that's what we got to do in today's environment. My question was, we got any idea how many that we'd be looking at, uh, over the 18 month period for that $4,000 increment, uh, increase in incentive or whatever?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Sheriff, do you, are y'all doing exit surveys? Are you finding out why they're leaving? What's the higher turnover rate for? I mean, what, what are you getting feedback on?
Yeah, we, we do exit interviews for those that, well, we'll do exit interviews. And I guess Steph can articulate the variety of reasons that we get.
There is not one consistent reason, you know, they're not leaving because of the pay. That would be one that, that would be an easy fix, to be honest, if that was just one reason they were leaving. But recently we've hired from out of state, we've had a few leave because they have no support system in the area. One moved their family from Oregon and they just, it didn't work out after a few months. One moved their family from Texas, love the area, love the agency, they just don't have the support here, so they're going back. Uh, one gentleman just quit to be unemployed because his wife is a travel nurse and so he was able to do that. And then unfortunately, corrections is a job, regardless of as much screening as we do, you don't know if you can do it and you're trying to be successful until you do it. So there's a fair number that get a few, six months into the job and it's not for them.
And we do job shadowing, but again, that's, you know, a day or two on the front side with applicant sort of job shadow or tour to the jail. But like Steph said, the longer you're in it, the more you decide if it's for you or not for you.
Follow up. Chairman.
Commissioner Lasker.
So why do you think this model's going to be what retains them in an asset? You know, with, with another question coming after that, what makes you think this is going to be the retaining? And then two, if we implement it, and like you said, just a second ago, Steph, one more month, maybe, okay, I'm going to get my bonus. Well, what happens if they decide to get their bonus and then leave? Is there going to be any recouping of those funds because they didn't meet the, fulfill the whole contract? And I'm just asking those questions because I've seen a myriad of this happen in different other workplaces and I've seen what they do. So I'm just trying to figure out what you guys have planned in either one of those cases.
Yeah, and, and John offered this suggestion and we implemented into here was, one is a 12 month pilot. So this is a pilot to see where, where it goes. And, um, in terms of recovering some of the funds, I mean, that's why it's incremental. There are some agencies that can give you a hiring bonus and then they say, well, if you don't fulfill your contract, we can sue you civilly and all those sort of things. But, um, frankly, oftentimes that's not worth the time and energy to go back on some kind of civil recourse against applicants. So if we stagger it out over 18 months, they got to kind of earn it as they go. And we don't put all of our eggs in one basket upfront, so it's incremental.
Okay. I don't know that this will be the answer to recruiting or retention. Uh, we've put in place a lot of pieces over the year. I think every piece makes a difference to each individual person, whether it's career advancement they want faster, it's more money upfront they want faster. We recently put into place reimbursing some of our, uh, uniform and equipment costs if they don't stay too long. So now you have, hey, I have to pay them back if I don't stay for what they spent on me. And if I do stay, I get more money. So hopefully we incentivize it on both ends. We've also changed shifts. Whatever the, the world says that they want, we're trying to figure out a way to do it so that we can solve this problem.
And, and the other criticism you get of a program like this is current employees and, you know, what, what are you doing for us? So that's the other feedback you get. And we have visited with John about, um, maybe at some point bringing forward increase, increase in the recruiting bonus that the county offers for current employees to recruit new employees and maybe look at some other options along those lines in terms of rewarding your current employees. But the fact of the matter is right now, we just have a hole we can't fill when it comes to openings in the correctional position, so.
Chair. Commissioner LaCroy.
First of all, thanks to Steph for, for clarifying because I was going to call you up because I have another question. I, I think the staggered approach and trying something that's going, because I, I totally agree with Kevin on the bonus type thing. A lot of people, it, it gets confused, confusion, whereas spread out gives the employee more time to, to really get to know the job, understand it. Maybe there's something that they didn't like and they, all of a sudden, things turn around. And I think you guys are getting creative and I think county is all together with schedules, changing schedules, trying to accommodate families and so forth, because it's a tough position. But one other thing that I, I thought about when I was going through this is trying to get people to come here. And you, you nailed it when you talked about some of the people that left, they didn't have the support system here. What about some of the people that, that, uh, that want to come and you're going to train them, but, but don't have the deposit for, for housing? To, to move here, you know, I don't know how much of that's happening with us right now, but is there some latitude with, with bonus instead of a bonus, maybe a loan for, 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 uh, down deposits on housing? I don't know. I mean, that's something you guys with your employees would be able to know more about than I would.
Yeah, we, we haven't gone down that path, um, in terms of some kind of helping with deposits or finding housing. As we all know, housing's a challenge in our community and they'd have the opportunity to take the bonus and use that money as a deposit or a first month rent or something, because they get money when they first sign on. So that might help alleviate some of that.
Okay, so that follows into some of the other stuff that I've been pressing to the community leaders or business owners in the community is, is trying to help find housing for people, one way or another. You know what I'm saying? I mean, if you want to retain employees, but the hardest thing, even with our pay and 18, starting out at $18 an hour, rents, average rent in town is getting up to 12 to 1300. That's over half their wages. So that's the tough part on that too. So I, I'm just making you guys aware, something to think about. I mean, I passed on, maybe some developers could, could give some discounts on housing for, for the workforce, but.
Mr. Chairman. One, one more question. So I noticed when you, you wrote in here, you said since 2019, is there something that happened in 2019 or that has caused just the reduction in applicants and things of that nature? I mean, is there, is there anything y'all can look back and say, hey, you know, maybe we changed something here in the county or the corrections or is it the market? What's, I mean, is there anything that y'all can look back to?
Uh, the, the biggest dip in applicants happened in 2020.
Happened in 2020.
I would, um, the application numbers, I don't know why they're trending down as significantly as they are. The only, this, and this is just my guess, looking at positions in our community. Is there a lot of jobs you can get that are now paying comparatively to what a correctional officer is? Historically, we've been a good paying job with the good benefits. And now all those other competitors are sneaking up there, whether you can go drive concrete chunk for Pete Lean for $20 an hour, they'll train you and then you get a bonus if you stay through the summer. Or you can come be a correctional officer for $20 an hour and deal what you have to deal with as a correctional officer. So I, I think it's just, there's things I can go do that are now going to pay me the same. And historically, that hasn't been true.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Kinnock.
So Kevin, this would be over a duration of two and a half years? If I understand it, so if we, it's a pilot program for 12 months and so at the end of the 12th month, we implemented this program, that'd carry out another 18 months then?
Correct, to finish out, if you hired somebody in the 11th or 12th month, it would take 18 months.
But we're talking, spreading this out over two and a half years and not just 12 months.
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just wouldn't follow up.
Commissioner LaCroy.
And then I'll be dead. You know, the, the question is why Travis asked, and I've had some, several meetings with some of the officers in town and, and the community. And I think one of the biggest reason is, is we need to promote better, uh, it's not so prestige to be, we, we've got long-term police officers with 14 years leaving the force, not staying on because, because some of the environment out there right now, you know, that's something to look at. I know the group that I'm in, uh, we're looking at ways to promote, uh, our officers and how to support them. And you guys have done a very good job as far as, uh, the mental part and trying to keep them healthy in that part. But I think that's one of the things us as a community need to promote, that correctional officers and police officers and sheriffs and, and law enforcement are there to help and protect them. I think we need to kind of promote that.
Thank you.
So John, is there something you wanted to add to this conversation or?
Morning Commissioners, John Morale, Pennington County Human Resources. So, um, this is something we've been contemplating actually with a few different positions and the sheriff brought it to our attention. I'm 100% behind the program. The, the things we've tried to date have not solved for this. I believe that when you stretch out the, the total compensation over a period of time, it not only will attract them, but it will retain them. And it, it's yet to be seen, but in the past positions that I've held where we've done similar things, this has been productive. It, it won't be the be all end all. It won't solve everything for us, but it'll give us a fighting chance to actually bring people in, give them a chance to learn and, and again, keep them here because they do see that there's that financial incentive available for them if they stay. There are a few other positions in the county that I'll be coming to, to speak with the commission about, to try something similar. But I, I commend the sheriff and Steph for, for putting this together. I, I think this is something that will truly give us a fighting chance to help fill these positions.
So question on, if we adopt this program, we hire a corrections officer, in 12 months, he chooses to apply for a job as a deputy in the sheriff's office. Does this program then stop at that point or?
You know, we haven't had a lot of discussion on that. I don't know, I guess we didn't sort that part out yet, um, if we would continue.
From my experience, it seems like a lot of the correctional officers would like to move on to regular law enforcement, uh, eventually.
It's the corrections as a recruiting pool for the rest of our office, absolutely. So I guess I assume that would follow them, but, um, we haven't had that discussion.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Same thing with the care campus. Serious.
Okay.
Yeah, oh, great question. The other thing that, as the sheriff mentioned earlier as well, um, the actual referral bonus program that we have within the county, we're putting together some ideas for how to make that a little bit more robust. Um, we're going to draft that, get it to the department heads for review and then bring that back to the commission for review as well. Uh, we believe there's an opportunity for us to make that a, a more substantial program. Will, will also help us. Again, if you have a current employee that refers someone, it's usually going to be a pretty good referral because it reflects on them personally. So we think that there's going to be a benefit with that, that improvement as well.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Kinnock.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the sheriff's office request, offer 4, 4,000.
Got a motion, is there a second? And a second from Commissioner LaCroy. Further discussion? Commissioner Lassiter.
I understand what we're doing here and, and I'm not opposed to trying to figure out what's the right way or the best way. I do kind of like what you brought up on that, Gary, your, your point about, you know, what if they want to move over into, to be in the deputy and things of that nature? And I guess maybe that's why I have hesitation and, and how that's going to be if, if an individual goes and wants to be a, a deputy, is it's going to carry with them or is it just only for the, the correctional officers like we're saying? How's it going to morph? I guess, I guess maybe I want to see more before I'm 100% on board with it. So I'm contemplating voting no, not because I don't agree with it, but I kind of want to see more, how it's going to flesh up, because I don't want it to be where we're doing this and then we add to say, okay, now we're going to carry it over whenever they go, go become a deputy and, and things of that nature. How it can, can expand like that, I guess. I don't know. That's kind of where my concern was. And I liked you pointed out that and so I'm just kind of giving my point of view on that, why I may vote no.
I think, I think for overall and for John's purpose, I think the clarification needs to be, I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean that the correctional officer stays in the law enforcement realm, but they may go to a different county office also. So I think we do need some clarification on, as far as what that policy would be, uh, moving forward. And my thought would be is that it stays with the position, not, not the person, if they move on to something else within the county, but.
Mr. Chairman, if I may too, and.
Commissioner.
I appreciate the comments from Commissioner Lassiter and, I mean, we're calling it a pilot because there's some things to work out like that yet. So give us 12 months to, you know, pilot it and work through some of those nuances like you've identified. And hopefully we can refine it and get it to where it's, I guess, clearly defined when it comes to people moving different positions, et cetera. So some of that needs to be vetted out a little bit yet.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Ross Kinnock.
Yeah, one of the reasons I, because you said it's a pilot and I, I got a feeling there's going to be a lot of other departments coming to us and asking the same thing. So I think we need to start somewhere and I think a correction, correctional officer is a good, good place to start. And we'll learn in the next 12 months, but we won't learn if we don't, uh, you know, pass this today.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner LaCroy.
You know, the reason why I'm going to, I support this because it's spread out, but also it, it gives the, it's over the time and that gives the new person time to build relationships. Everybody knows you spend most of your time at work and it's, it becomes a family and that gives you that opportunity. Now, whether they move up to, to a sheriff, more power to it. Now, whether they move up to to a sheriff or more power to us, win win. We all it it it's doing what it's doing. We're going to promote within. It it all works one way or another because we all know correctional officers and care campus are sometimes they're the the beginning for some people for in the career moving up. So I think it's a win win all the way around.
Okay, just one more clarification.
Okay.
Uh, I'm not sure I'm following the two and a half years. So the person that would be hired today under this, they'd get the thousand dollars on the hire. Uh, six months from now, they would get another thousand. A year from now, they would get another thousand. And at the two month or the second year anniversary, twenty four months in, is when they would receive the final.
If I understood Commissioner Ross Connect's question, what he was saying is if we hire somebody in month twelve of this pilot, there's to owes over the next eighteen months to get that bonus. So really, it's a two and a half year window we're talking about because from month twelve to eighteen months out, do they explain that correct?
Yep. Okay. Okay, any other questions? Discussion? I have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
So I have a vote of three to one with Commissioner Laster not voting. Uh, Commissioner Haddock is absent or probably be absent for the remainder of the meeting today. So the motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, Kevin, on firearms.
Periodically varies every three or four years. We have a surplus of firearms that we've accrued and we've put them out to bid and that's what you have before you now. We do it with a sealed bid process. There was fifty eight firearms. We had seven bids and those are laid out in front of you. The highest bid was seventeen thousand seven fifty five and just a motion to accept that bid.
Move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion from Commissioner Laster, second by Commissioner LaCroy to approve. Uh, any public discussion? Being none, any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Item twelve, Joe Miller.
Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. Uh, first item on the uh the agenda there is a Forest Service agreement, just an update. Simply updating some contact information on the uh the agreement there. Spent some changes in the Forest Service recently, so they just wanted to get it updated uh with current content information.
Move for approval.
Second.
Got a, I've got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Laster to approve. Uh, any public comment? Any further dis- uh commission comment? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item B.
Item B, uh, this is a authorization to purchase road salt off the state contract. Typically, on a on a typical year, we purchase around a thousand tons of of road salt per year. Last year's bid price was eighty three dollars and seven cents per ton. Uh, this year's price is actually eighty one dollars and ninety four cents a ton. Uh, so it's a decrease of a dollar fifteen per ton. Um, you know, this year it'd be a little bit different. Typically, on a typical year, we our our current shed holds about twelve loads of salt, so we'd order those throughout the uh throughout the year. With our new salt storage shed, we'll be able to get all those in at once and mix our our sand and salt and and be able to store that indoors. So we won't have to to order throughout the year. So it'll be a little bit different year this year, so.
Yeah.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion in a s- in a second from Commissioner LaCroy and Commissioner Laster to approve. Any public comment? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item C.
Item C, county striping agreement. Uh, this is a little bit late coming to us this year. This is, they they got started striping, I believe, first week in July and they've got majority of our stuff done. This company's out of Oregon. First time they've ever got the state bid, so they're they're doing a very good job, but they what they're doing looks fantastic. The state's had this striping program that they participate in for a little over, well, over fifteen years that we've been participating in it anyways. Our county policy currently is any road that's over thirty five miles an hour is what we stripe. This funding isn't guaranteed in the in the future. And as you can see there, the state puts up a half a million dollars to all the counties in the state, so it's a very small amount of money for the miles of roads that the counties have. Um, for Pennington County, the the limit for twenty twenty one is a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars. So the state pays sixty percent of that and the county pays forty percent. So the county's portion was fifty eight thousand dollars in in twenty twenty one. We go over that limit because just for the sheer miles of roads that we have that we stripe, um, the amount over that limit is two hundred and thirty five thousand dollars. The cost of the total cost of the county um is about three hundred and thirty one thousand dollars. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Uh.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Oh, my question was on the on the new polymer polymer paint that they're going to try. That's on ten ten miles. Where is that going to be again?
Uh, I believe Sean might be able to answer that question. I believe Norris Peak and uh Portion Anima Road uh is the majority of it.
So as a trial, higher build, we're we're expecting it to last for five years. That's that'd be the, so the initial cost may be quite, I'm assuming it's going to be double, triple?
I don't know what the initial cost is. I know it's more expensive than what we currently do. And yes, that's the thought process is it'll last a little bit or it'll last longer than what we currently do. It's yet to be seen, you know, with our climate, we'll see.
Currently, we're doing it like every two years?
No, we stripe every year.
Every year.
Yep. We.
So if we we can get it to five, try this out.
Yeah, if we if we can get another two or three years out of it, you know, not having to stripe that same ten miles every year would be a cost savings.
Might outlast the road.
Possibly.
So Joe, give me that total dollar amount again. That match what we have here?
Uh, I might not have it. I believe it's two nine, I think I said three thirty one. That was actually from last year. I believe this year is actually two ninety four is the total cost of the county. Is that?
Two ninety four, three seventy six.
So the first paragraph, no, maybe it's not, yeah, first paragraph uh says uh two hundred and eighty three point five four miles of county roads are scheduled to be striped in twenty twenty one at an estimated cost of three hundred and eighty two thousand.
Okay.
Seven hundred and eleven dollars and eight cents.
Yes, so I have my number. That's the right number. Yes, three eighty two. Yes.
Okay.
I apologize for that. I had notes from last year's striping agreement. Didn't get updated, so.
I was just trying to figure out numbers here, so.
Lot of numbers in that memo.
Is there any public comment relative to uh this proposal? Back to the commission. Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
I've got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy and second by Commissioner Ross Connect. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item D.
Item D, uh, this is in a agreement with the Rochford Volunteer Fire Department for an electrical usage. We typically park a uh wheeled backhoe at their facility, at their fire department. Rapid Creek right along uh Rochford Road and in the town of Rochford there likes to freeze up um and then causing water to come out onto to Rochford Road. So therefore, we keep a backhoe there and needs to be plugged in due to the cold temperatures up there. So it starts when we go up there to uh declaw or or get the ice jams out of Rapid Creek.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Connect.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect, second by Commissioner LaCroy. Uh, any public comment? Any further comment by the commission? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item E.
Item E, uh, joint powers maintenance agreement uh with the state here. The the state actually approached me probably about a year ago with this project and initially, we told them, no, we didn't want uh that responsibility placed on us, you know, and it's in the state right of way. We don't want any business with maintaining any of that sidewalk. Since then, Brittany has actually updated her nuisance ordinance. Uh, I don't remember exactly the ordinance number. But they put the maintenance and uh snow removal and all the the things that go along with the sidewalk onto the adjacent landowners. So therefore, with that ordinance being in place, we then we felt that it doesn't put any more burden on to Pennington County. Um, so therefore, we were in agreement.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
This is one that I had a question on, Joel. From my understanding, so they're going to, the state's going to install the sidewalks and redo some figuring and so forth on these properties. So how does, if I'm a property owner and I see the state come in and redo the corner and so forth, I think, hey, great, that looks nice. I didn't know I have to maintain it. Who lets them know that? I mean, as this, if if we're going to put them in at the time, do we send them something saying you're responsible for these now? Or are we going to wait until it's a violation and then go to them and say, hey?
Well, typically.
Try to be proactive than reactive.
Typically, in the county, you know, so this is actually talking to to Mark Shock. This is something that one of our state's attorney and maybe Jay might be able to to allude to some of it if he's here, but uh, a state's attorney fifteen, twenty years ago saw this being a need much like the city, but you know, the city puts all that onus on the landowners also. Um, and that's what the county's practice has been. We haven't, we don't take that owners, the onus of the the sidewalk currently. So that we just needed to get it in an ordinance. Um, so therefore, we're not changing anything. We're continuing with the policy that we've been doing. We're not changing our practices. We're just simply putting it into writing.
I didn't mean to interrupt, but the reason why I say that is because I was just out in that area yesterday doing some some work and and there's not, is it going to be, it's off Highway forty four going on to Covington in that areas where it's, that's where I'm picturing.
So it it it's actually, it's on the north side of the road and it starts at LaCrosse Street on Omaha, goes all the way to Covington Street on the north side of the road.
From LaCrosse sidewalks all the way down?
LaCrosse Street on forty four, in the forty four right of way, there's going to be a sidewalk from LaCrosse all the way to Covington Street. It's a it's a large project.
Okay, I I was just thinking a smaller one in that Covington and I know on that one side, you know, they just paved some asphalt on the upper part of the hill and so forth.
Yep.
So, you know, it's not like there's a a property owner there year round. So whoever's that, I'm just saying, I'd rather be proactive than reactive, but hopefully notices can be sent out to all property owners that they're.
Yeah, I I'm, I would assume the state does that, but we all know what assuming does. I don't know. I can ask that question to Mike Carlson.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
I got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Laster to approve. Any public comment? Further comment by the commission? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item F.
Item F, South Dakota VW Program Rebate Agreement. Uh, so we were actually successful in obtaining the uh the rebate for one new truck uh that meets the EPA standards. Um, with the exceptionally long lead time, uh, we've already, so we had this truck in our in our twenty twenty two budget. We also have another truck in our twenty twenty two budget. So to save on advertising and and the the time and effort that it takes to to go through a bidding process, uh, we did, we're seeking um authorization to go to bid, to seek bids for two trucks. That will be delivered in tw- the first quarter of twenty twenty two. Um, I'm sure everybody knows, but with the current microchip shortage, new vehicles and and new equipment are taking a lot longer than they had been in the past.
Move for approval.
Second.
I've got a motion from Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Ross Connect. Any public comment? Back to the commission. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item G.
Item G, professional service agreement for Sherman Street Bridge. Um, this is an amendment to the original agreement that we've got with KLJ. KLJ's done the survey and the hydraulics on this bridge. Um, I know, I believe it was last meeting or the weekend, the meeting before, we came forward with a resolution to apply for the PE grant. Um, unfortunately, on our part, uh, my part, we didn't read close enough under that uh big funding. So the PE grant is actually for what we've already done on Sherman Street. It's for the survey and the hydraulics, the preliminary engineering. That's kind of a fault on our so our part. Um, didn't read closely enough on that one. So with that, we'd like to move forward with the design so we can submit this project for a a big grant in January.
Can you see?
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Laster moved?
Yep.
Commissioner LaCroy seconded.
I just got a question.
Any public comments?
Commissioner LaCroy.
No, I was going to make a comment. Well, I was reading through there that by doing this, you you get ten more points on the big application grant.
Correct. Yep.
So that kind of boosted up. So we're basically the shovel ready, ready to go, bang, it's going to happen. Okay.
Correct, yeah, we've, you know, and we've already started the right of waiting uh process. It's Forest Service right away, so we know that can take a long time from our experience with Sheridan Lake and and South Rochford. So we started that already and it sounds like that this will be a little bit different process than what those large projects are. Um, so we should be able to get this thing shovel ready uh by January.
Further comments? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item H.
Item H, uh, South Rochford Road Amendment. Um, so there should be three amendments there, uh, three separate motions. Um, these agreements, they're basically, it's the the final steps into getting the the South Rochford federal funding put over to the Sheridan Lake Road project and getting that money moved all around. It needs to be done uh by August twenty first to in order to make that all happen and have that application go to the federal highway. Um, so there's also an amendment in there to take away the the SIB loan from Sheridan Lake Road. Um, from the, everything that I could see, it looks like we're actually going to come out a little bit better on our STIP funds going forward for South Rochford. Um, have a little bit more funds to put towards that. So with that, I guess I'll stand for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Ross Connect.
So we're still on board transferring the that SIB loan from Sheridan Lake to Rochford?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, if I may, soon as this is all done, uh, Noel with the state will get us an application, a pre-filled out application for the South Rochford SIB loan, which we can't actually get the loan until we go to bid for the project, but it'll be a preauthorization, much like we had for Sheridan Lake Road.
So do we have to approve each one of these separately, Mr. Chair?
I think we do.
I'll go ahead and uh approve uh motion number one to move move to approve amendment number one to agreement seven one three oh nine seven with the South Dakota DOT.
Second.
I've got a motion from Ross Connect, second from Commissioner Lassiter. Uh, for the public, uh, these three items, these two amendments, uh, and this Exhibit A, if anybody has any comments relative to any of these three, uh, I'd ask you to come forward now. If not, all those in favor of the uh motion for amendment number one to the agreement, uh, seven one three oh nine seven, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carried.
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval, motion number two, move to approve amendment number one to agreement nine eleven two twenty five with SD DOT.
Second.
Got a motion and a second for the motion number two. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Move to approve Exhibit A, agreement number nine one one two two five with South Dakota DOT.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item I.
Item I, it's the last one. Have you guys worn out yet? I am. Hours of operation trial run. Um, so, you know, Mark Shock been here for thirty some years. We've got individual that's been here thirty six years and we've always switched from four tens to to five eights. Um, kind of looking at the hours and the and and whatnot and even kind of the vastness of our county, you know, travel time is up to an hour one way. So five eights doesn't really allow us to get a whole lot of work done. You know, I think ten hour shift, you know, we're really gambling. The only thing that we're really, I I shouldn't say gambling, but the only wild card is is our Fridays during the five eights, I should say. So therefore, our, this year, there's nineteen of them. So that would be the the extra overtime. But on the flip side of that, Monday through Thursday, we typically start at four AM, you know, so there's an extra hour or an hour of savings in the morning, starting at six AM on overtime, Monday through Thursday, instead of starting at seven. So there's only two hours instead of three hours. And then on the backside of that, you also have of three hours. And then on the backside of that, you also have, you know, sometimes we're out till 6:30, 7:00, 8:00 at night, getting the traveling public home, especially in those bigger storms. So therefore, we'd save on overtime there. It's less overtime we have to pay on the, the backside of that Monday through Thursday, so I believe there should be a cost savings, and we won't really know if there is a cost savings or not until we do it for, for a year to see exactly what we, what we've got. Now, I had Chris, our accountant, pull up, and from 2008 to 2009, we've been, we can't really sort it, but we can, we can show how many events or snow events we've had on specific days. So Sunday, we've got 124. Friday, we've got, we've been out for snow 204 times, and Saturday, 119 times in 10 years, and that's our typical snow season. So it's about the only data set we really have to work with. Until we try it, we won't really know. We did do a poll in-house. The vast majority of people are in favor of going to four 10s year round. We did get, I believe, one no, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I appreciate you guys at least doing in-house assessment and asking your people what they prefer. You know, a lot of people think four 10s, you know, when I was offered this many years ago, I thought, but once you got used to it, it was great. You had the three-day weekends off. I think that's keeping it consistent year round is probably gonna be good for your employees. One of the other things I would probably suggest, maybe looking at in the future, depending on how things work out, maybe there's some people that want to work Tuesday through Friday, just so you know you got at least one, I don't know your makeup, I'm not judging, so you guys know what's going on, but working with the schedules, I think, is, is great for the employees and getting the morale down. The travel time, I argue with my wife all the time on this, that people don't understand the travel time. Like, it's just like you said, sometimes it's a half hour, hour to get to where you're going, and then that time coming back. And if you take that out of an eight-hour shift, minus your breaks, minus your lunch, you're really only getting-
Three, four hours.
Exactly, so I appreciate you guys looking forward at this and, and, and looking at the whole picture.
Further discussion?
Move to approve.
Got a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect and a second by Commissioner La Croix to approve. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Boy, you burned up a lot of paper there.
What's ahead?
You burned up a lot of paper there.
Had to get some stuff done.
Thank you.
Holly.
Commissioners, at this time, we are going to request the board readdress item 10A. We, there is some information that we feel the board should be aware of, and ask for your reconsideration of that agenda item, which would take a motion for, to reconsider item 10A.
Is the individual here?
He is not.
Move to reconsider item 10A, which would be the retail on sale liquor license with Sandy Sales?
Correct.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to reconsider item 10A. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Moller, Planning Director. We just wanted to just do a clarification on this. When a denial of a liquor license is done by this board, that applicant cannot reapply for another year. So with that denial, then they can't come back. The applicant is working with our office to, and clearing the violations. So we had, or excuse me, us and the State's Attorney's Office had spoken about maybe just tabling it or continuing it till a later date where they can get all of their permits and a building permit can be issued for the structure. That way, if they can get that done in less than a year, that would give them opportunity.
Mr. Chair.
One second. I understood him to, to say that he had all the violations that he had had all been cleared by your office.
They had. We went out on Friday afternoon. There was a couple more corrections that he needed to do, but it didn't warrant them being completely shut down. We opened it back up so he could get that dirt work finished up. The other issue was that he does not have a building permit, a permanent building permit for any structure or use on that property, but there is a provision in the ordinance for the liquor license that does allow conditional approval, or you can continue it to allow, give him time to submit a building permit and get a building permit approved by our office. That would require any conditional uses to be approved also in order to get that building permit before, and then bring it back before you. So that way, if he can get that done in that year, then he can bring it back before you if he doesn't. But right now, with the denial, he cannot come back in front of the board for a year.
Commissioner La Croix.
Thanks, thanks for that clarification, because that's what was part of why I was kind of asking about, does he get his money back, or is it along those lines, because there's some of those ties to that. But my next question is, we're reconsidering, so we don't need the original motion maker and secretary to-
You do not.
Okay, that, I just wanted to clarify that with Deb Gom, because she was the motion maker and I was the second.
The motion to reconsider had to be made by somebody on the prevailing side, in which every one of you was on that original motion. So right now, the motion to continue can be made by anyone as a new motion.
Okay. I would, I would make that motion to continue.
I would second.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
So would this be move to continue until such time there's actually a physical structure there to hang that license?
Megan Krueger for the State's Attorney's Office. So the ordinance actually doesn't require that there be a physical structure. It only requires that they have sufficient plans for a physical structure. It allows for basically a one-year buffer for somebody to put brick and mortar down. The ordinance doesn't actually require a physical structure for the license.
But eventually, there's, there's gotta be a physical structure if you're gonna have a license.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's just conditional approval until such time as you have that approved structure. So you get, you basically bring in your plans, you can get conditional approval from this board, and then once you have your structure actually built, then you get full approval.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lassiter.
Can I just ask a clarification for that, then? Primarily because on our package here, it says, per ordinance 142 liquor license, section eight requires a sufficient structure in which to conduct business in. So how do you rectify that with not requiring-
Look at section 10. That's the operative section.
Okay, so you have to read eight and ten together?
We don't have 10 in front of us.
It's on, it's on the back page.
I, I should have known this. I watched-
Premise or parcel, okay. Okay.
You can also continue it indefinitely till such time, or you can conditionally approve.
They have one year, right.
So the motion was?
To continue. Pretty much, the license is good for one year. If they get it done within one year after that, it, it goes away.
Continue it, there's no approval and there's no denial. It's just saying that they, he has to have sufficient information to come back before you, for you guys to consider it.
Not two years later, not one year, three months later, it's one year.
Right.
So we continue it up to the, from the date he applied for the license, that's the date that it ends, that he asked out.
So actually, it's, it's the conditional approval. So if you guys give conditional approval, then he gets that year, but you guys can continue it out and, until such time as he gets that building permit. Or if you want to give him six months, you can give him six months, give a set timeframe if that's what you want to do. And then, in terms of how long that application can sit out there, you know, I would say, if you want to have a set timeframe, you can have a set timeframe. If you want to give him until he gets that building permit approved and all of the other conditions that he needs to complete your planning approved first, you can take that route.
Okay, thanks for the clarification, because I just watched this, the city with the video lottery licenses, and they're reworking it, and they're, they're, they're talking about issuing so many licenses, and then you have one year to have, have the building, and that's, so that's what my frame of thought was going, that you have that one year to get the building in a place, or you give them back, not sit on them. So you're right, we have, we're not actually issuing the license right now. We're wanting to continue it, and I, I believe if we're gonna continue this, we should have a time limit on it. That's my kind of thoughts. I don't know what everybody else is thinking, but, because otherwise, we get people to come in, apply for a license, and, and ask for a continuance and continuance till they build and, you know, wait, something else happens. So I think that needs to be clarified with our applicants and, and with us.
Secura, what is the, what is the current motion that you have?
I was just gonna ask you guys. I just have to continue this item, but I don't have a date or anything. You guys just said to continue it.
You guys have a recommendation? I was the motion maker, so I'd take a recommendation of the date and time.
You could do six months. What's the first meeting in February?
Six months would give him time to work on stuff, and then he'd come back and he could ask for a continuance. I think we need to have a time-
Yep.
Okay.
Some motion maker-
Meeting in February?
Just put February 2022.
Yeah.
Is that okay with the second?
Yes.
Okay, I have a motion to continue this until February of 2022. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, another question, please. Are you gonna reach out to Jason and let him know, Ms. Eisenbaum?
Yes.
Okay.
So is there any members of the public that wish to address this?
I'd just continue it.
Seeing none. We have a motion and a second to continue until February 2022. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay.
Back to you, Holly.
Thank you, Commissioners, for that. The first item under Commission Manager Items is Resolution 2021-C1, which is the resolution to approve a contingency fund, a transfer for $14,141 for the purchase of the cardiac monitor as requested by the Wall Ambulance District.
Move for approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any members of the public wishing to address this? This is an item that we actually approved at our previous meeting, but it needed to be in resolution form, and that's why it's back before us today. Any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The second item is also Resolution 21, 2021-C2, which is a contingency fund request. This is a new request in front of the board today for approval to upgrade or update the Commission Office Conference Room. When the pandemic hit, we realized that we didn't have the ability to hold meetings as we were being requested to do so. So what this is, is a integration of technology into our conference room to be able to host meetings. It would give us the ability to record meetings in that room, integrate our phone system into the speakers and the ceiling, and into the current technology that we have in these chambers right now. So the request for today is to approve the resolution, the amount of $32,500 for the installation of technology in the conference room.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
So this would be coming out of contingency. I, I do feel this is needed, because I was just on the healthcare trust board. I zoomed in because I had, couldn't make it here on time, but I normally try to make it first. It was horrible.
Yeah.
I couldn't hear everybody speaking, couldn't, and then just the day before, me and Travis were at our healthcare trust board meeting, and they have the defense technology, or community health. I mean, the technology was great. So that was my concern. I'm, I'm for it. The only other thing is, is there any COVID funding available for it? Can you think of? We could do it out of contingency and look for it. I, I-
There, I, I believe there may be. At the end of the day, it all comes out of the same pot, so to speak, but we could do a, a different allocation when we're looking at the funding later. One of the reasons I didn't want to wait is, we all know that techno, parts and pieces are hard to get right now, so we're looking at about six more weeks to be able to do this. So I would like to get started and get some things on order. But yes, there is a possibility.
Okay. One other stipulation I'd like you to add when you do this is to put a plugin on top of the table so we don't have people crawling underneath the table to-
That is part of the quote, yes, sir.
Okay.
Any other-
Move for approval.
Go ahead. So I got a motion to approve from Lloyd. Can I get a second?
Second.
Roll call. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Item C, Building and Grounds Proposed Bylaws.
Correct. Commissioners, in front of you, you have a draft copy of the bylaws for the Pennington County Building Committee. This is basically just putting in writing the structure that the committee has at this time, in addition for some clarifying and guiding principles on, on what their roles and duties are. So I would certainly stand for any questions, if anybody has any on the draft.
Any comments from the commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Mike Cool is here, too, if you have any questions for him.
Mr. Travis. Just out of curiosity, I have, I have two questions here. First, who was all in that committee to develop the, these bylaws? Who was involved with developing the bylaws?
They have been worked on by myself, Commissioner Hancock, Jay Alderman, and Mike Cool.
Okay.
And have been in front of the building committee also for their feedback as well.
Gotcha. So my follow-up question is this, and so the composition of the board, and this, whenever I was looking at it, this is what kind of jumped out to me. For the most part, I agree with the, the composition of the board, but I see that there's two buildings, which you would have individuals over them, the judge and the sheriff over their buildings, but I don't see any other individuals that would be over their buildings, like Joe Miller from Highway Department, or any of the other buildings that are underneath the county that are on there. Is there a reason why we chose those two individuals outside of the, the two county commissioners, the auditor, the treasurer, and the Building and Grounds Director, which I think those are appropriate, because we're dealing with the money, the funding, and making sure everything's done right, the county commission, because we're overseeing it. But is there a reason why those two, Care Campus is another building that I don't see the, the individual who's over that building in this committee? Is there a reason why those two particular building heads were placed in this instead of others or along with others?
Not necessarily. It's just, like I say, it was the structure that's in place right now that, that is listed right there. It's already seven members, so you keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger and-
I'm actually thinking about bringing it down to five. That's kind of where I was looking at, because I agree with you, the more you get everybody involved in it, I'm not saying they shouldn't be involved, because each building has their different issues.
Meetings, and, and every department head or anybody is, is allowed to go and, and speak and, and be a part of it, absolutely. It's just the voting.
Right. That's why I think if you have individuals who have their building that could be voted upon, that might be an influencer for their vote.
Well, if you look in there, there is a section that states, "Any member shall abstain from voting if the proposed project involves planning, construction, or remodeling projects within the member's office, department, or area of responsibility." So that is a new piece in there. So like the, the judge, in theory, shouldn't be voting on a project in the courthouse. The sheriff shouldn't be voting on a project in the jail, Care Campus, things like that.
Chairman, may I?
I'd like to review it a little longer, I think.
Yeah, I think I agree.
All right.
Go ahead.
I, I guess I just wanted to add to Holly's comments. The, one of the goals was to reduce the number down somewhat. There, there, there'd been some discussion revolving around that. What, what's kind of occurred is we've kind of reverted back to what was a more traditional makeup of, of the, the members, and, and that's where we've landed.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I, I would look at continuing this to the next meeting to give myself a little more chance to look at it and review it.
Second.
Got a motion, Commissioner?
I guess.
I have a motion and a second to continue until the next meeting. Further discussion? Any public comment relative to this item? Any public comment relative to this item? The Arts and Commission, any further discussion?
Is there anything you would like additional information presented for the next meeting?
No. What I want to do is review, because you guys just brought up some stuff that I think I needed to evaluate and think about and reach out a little bit more about. That's it. I mean, just some of the discussion we just had, I'd like.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items from the public, and I do have a gentleman, Scott McGinley. Come on forward.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak for a little bit. And I'm gonna read this to you so we can keep it in the four-minute section. And so I am Scott McGinley. I've lived in here Rapid City since 1974. And so what I'm doing is I'm bringing a proclamation to you, to read to today, and it's called a County-by-County Patriot Proclamation. It's designed to start in each county to unify in purpose the people in the county and agree to return to the principles that the United States of America set forth 200 years ago. It is not new. It's a commitment to return to the original United States of America. Our past, you know, our country's kind of on a path to destruction, and changing presidents does not change the country, and changing people, though, does change it. And really, you change the people from the bottom up, not the top down. And so it needs to start at the grassroots and the local government. And I'm asking to adopt this resolution and go on record supporting these principles in our people, for our people in our county. Now, I don't expect that to happen today, and I expect to get some feedback on that, because it, it's gonna sound like a church meeting. And the reason that we're not doing it in church is that they'll probably be the last, and I don't mean to step on toes here, but they'll probably be the last ones to adopt this, but they will when they see they have support from the people in the government. I'm kind of at a van. So let me read this, and then I'll be finished, and if you have a quick question or two, I can do that. Otherwise, I have my name and my phone number and my email, and I would entertain, please call me if you have some questions. So, County-by-County Patriot Proclamation, it's our purpose to declare our county for the Kingdom of God, for the mutual benefit of its citizens by obedience to the Word of God, the American Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and the Declaration of Independence. We claim the promises of land to dwell in according to the Abrahamic covenant as established in Holy Scripture. Number two, we hold fast the freedoms established by our founding fathers at the birth of our nation. Number three, we believe in God's sovereignty over the affairs of men and man's obedience to God's governmental authority. Number four, we have the God-given right to resist tyranny and will stand on our God-given freedoms found in the Word of God, the American Constitution, which includes the Second Amendment right to bear arms. We declare Pennington County, the state of South Dakota, the United States, for the glory of God and to Him alone. We oppose, number six, we oppose and denounce the invasion of cultures and ideals contrary to our Judeo-Christian values and rule law. Those we have welcomed into our nation must assimilate and become productive members of the society. Number seven, we refuse to compromise our freedoms for personal gain. We will hold, we will hold all who hold office to the same standard. Number eight, we will vow to live our lives for the benefit of future generations. Number nine, we believe in the consequences of sin and the blessings found through the obedience to God's holy word. And number 10, as people, as God's people, we will remain engaged in our local government. Number 11, we will ask God to judge our intent and hold us accountable as His ambassadors, ambassadors in Pennington County, South Dakota. Number 12, we will stand against the overreach of any government and protect our borders, our community, and our land and private property. Number 13, we'll stand for what is right, true, and just, and we bring that with this prayer. Oh, Father in heaven, bless our nation as we are guided by your providence. Hold us to the task, and may your reverential fear of the mighty God rule our hearts, our homes, our nation. We hereby decree this proclamation in the name of the Word Jesus Christ, and to Him all the glory and honor forever and ever. So, in closing, I just think this proclamation would solve a great deal of problems that we have in this community, even things we heard today. And so, I did read this to the city council and just felt that it would return the decorum, which the mayor was concerned about. And so I thank you again for your, your, your attention. I have a addition to that, and I won't go over it today, but I had some patriot candidate qualifications that would be of interest to somebody in this body. I would love to visit about that. Any questions?
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Appreciate you coming before us, presenting the, the proposal, and we will certainly take it under consideration.
Thank you. God bless.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And as I say, you're welcome to shoot me an email if you don't mind with your contact info.
There's the Lloyd, give that to Travis. His contact, contact info is right on there. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we will call for a motion to, no, item 15, items for planning and zoning. Brittany? Or Jason? Want to take a break before we go?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
Motion to take a five-minute break.
Second.
How long?
Five.
Five minutes? I got a motion and a second.
Of course.
Five-minute break. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Be back in five. Okay, I need a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
Move to go into the Board of Adjustment.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Back it.
And a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Just want to point out to the audience that Board, when we said as a Board of Adjustment, in order to approve something, we need to have four positive votes, normally four out of five. We are missing a commissioner today, and so anything that comes before the Board of Adjustment needs to have a unanimous approval by this board. If you have any concerns at all and would like to delay this, we'd be happy to hear it on your particular issue to delay it for two weeks until hopefully we'd have a full board sitting as a Board of Adjustment too. Jason.
Morning Commissioners, Jason Thinnison, Deputy Planning Director. Agenda item A is variance 21-03, to allow 77 units on a dead-end road system in lieu of 40 units. The applicant's agent is requesting this item, oh, I'm sorry. The applicant is Ian and Brad Estes. Their agent is Fisk Land Surveying, and Janelle's in the audience if you have any questions for her. Site location is 500 Ridgeland Loop. The subject property is 10.95 acres, currently zoned rural residential and agriculture districts. When making a recommendation to the board, staff considers a two-pronged approach. Prong one determines whether granting a variance runs counter to the public interest. Those are on the screen. I'll read staff's responses to them, starting with number one, does it injure the neighborhood? Yes. The neighborhood already exceeds the maximum number of dwelling unit, dwellings allowed on a dead-end road system. Number two, does it conform to the neighborhood? No. The neighborhood currently contains 59 dwellings and 16 vacant lots on a dead-end road system. Number three, does it conform to the general purpose of the zoning ordinance? No. The zoning ordinance states in all zoning districts, no more than 40 dwellings are permitted along a dead-end road system. Number four, does it conform to the comprehensive plan currently in place? The current comprehensive plan identifies the property as rural residential district, which requires a three-acre minimum lot size. Number five, does it harm public safety, health, or general welfare of the community? Yes. Increasing density on a dead-end road system jeopardizes public safety. A wildfire on March 29th, 2021 restricted ingress and egress on Schroeder Road. Prong number two, determines whether special conditions exist to grant a variance, such as physical conditions, not money, or economic hardship. Starting with number one, does a special condition, exceptional narrow, narrowness, topography, sighting, or the like exist on the subject property? Staff finds no. There are no special conditions or physical conditions that exist that would warrant approval of this variance. Staff's analysis of the request is that Pennington County zoning ordinance states that in all zoning districts, no more than 40 dwellings are permitted along a dead-end road system. There are currently 59 existing dwellings and 16 vacant lots that take access off of a dead-end road, being Schroeder Road, for a total of 75 potential dwellings. The applicants are proposing to subdivide the subject property into three separate lots through the planning process with the city of Rapid City. One of the proposed lots contains an existing dwelling. The request will add an additional two lots taking access off of a dead-end road system for a total of 77 potential dwellings. The city of Rapid City City Council granted an exception to allow 77 units in lieu of 40 units with one point of access. Staff did contact the U.S. Forest Service to determine whether a U.S. Forest Service road that exists at the end of Schroeder Road could potentially be used as an emergency egress from the subdivision. The gate to access the road is locked seasonally, and there's a picture of the gate on the screen for you to see. The gate is, the gate to access the road is locked seasonally, and the U.S. Forest Service has recommended the road not be used as it is impassable for most vehicles. Staff recommends a permanent secondary means of ingress or egress be established before further development in this area continues. On March 26th, 2021, staff received an email from a concerned resident that takes access off Schroeder Road. He also suggested options for a secondary access. Three days later, a 2,000-acre fire officially named the Schroeder Fire began near Schroeder Road, which restricted residents of the 59 existing dwellings from egressing the area via Schroeder Road. Access to all 77 proposed existing lots is, lots from Nemo Road is via access off of Schroeder Road. There's no special flood hazard area on the subject property. The request was announced for interdepartmental review. The Rapid City Planning Office stated that they identify the future land use as forest conservation, which identifies large lot residential as a secondary use and a minimum, minimum three acres per dwelling. The proposed use is in compliance with the city's future land use plan. A preliminary subdivision plan to create three lots for the subject property has been to the Planning Commission, approved the stipulations on March 4th of 2021, and was approved by city council on March 15th of this year. Lastly, the city council granted an exception to allow 77 dwelling units in lieu of 40 with one point of access. County Highway also had comments stating that they oppose this variance. The current subdivision is already out of compliance with the subdivision regulations for a dead-end road system. The U.S. Forest Service had comments stating that according to the Forest Service Motor Vehicle Use Map, the road here identified as NFSR 199 on the map, this is the Forest Service road that I contacted them about, is classified roads open to all vehicles, with other roads in the area being open to highway legal vehicles only. Initially, they stated they did not see a problem with this request. However, once I did a site visit and noted that the gate was locked, they came back with a follow-up response stating that the locks are put in the gates for seasonal closure, usually around April or May is when we unlock the gates. Please see below comments from the Mystic Ranger District's law enforcement officer. So their statement from Mystic Ranger District Law Enforcement Officer is that there's a large amount of unauthorized access from Schroeder Road already that accesses this road. It is an extremely rough road slash trail that is not suitable for most vehicles and certainly should not be considered designated alternate evacuation route, in my opinion. A road slash route construction project should be considered across private lands in Section 35 north of Schroeder to the next development area if there's a significant concern from the county or the residents in those areas. The county fire also stated that this area is a historic fire path in a fire-dependent ecosystem, and noted that at least three major fires have engulfed the area since 1988, and future development in the area will only add to the likelihood of more. With that, staff recommends denial due to a lack of secondary ingress or egress. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, staff recommends no conditions be included.
Are the applicants in the audience?
The applicant's agent is, yes, sir.
Would they like to add anything to this? I read that. Were you, actually was representing some of their interests here, so.
Good morning, Commissioners, Janelle Fink. I'm here on behalf of landowner Brad and Ian Estes, and Brad is in the audience today. I'm, was with Fisk Land Surveying formerly, and now we are a part of KTM. So going forward, you will see us as representing KTM and our clients there. Thank you for your time today. We originally brought this application forward in March, untimely in terms of recent events, and I understand that, you know, this is definitely a sensitive question and issue, and I'm sure that you've given some thought to this. But I believe that there are some other considerations that maybe you had not thought through or been pointed out to you as part of this. So I would like to start by saying, this variance request for the dead-end road system comes from your zoning ordinance. This is the first time you will have heard this request or a request like this, because this insertion into the zoning ordinance is a new insertion. Previously, there was a dead-end road system requirement in the subdivision ordinance when people were plating and creating lots. It did not live in the zoning ordinance. So today is a test of how this fits in the zoning or land use ordinance. And I want to remind you that we're not talking about plating, because this was within the city's three-mile jurisdiction, so they have jurisdiction over the plating. They did approve the preliminary subdivision plan, and they did approve the 40-unit exception with stipulations that the owner go through a wildfire mitigation plan, which he did and received approval, and that he agreed to sprinkle any new residences, any new residences on these lots, which he did agree to do. Those are kind of typical city comments. So I'm gonna start out by, really quickly, I'm gonna read you the language for the variance, that as it appears, excuse me, the language as it appears in the zoning ordinance. It says, "In all zoning districts, no more than 40 dwellings are permitted along a dead-end, a dead-end road system." And a dead-end road system is the total number of roadways dead-ended connecting that provide only a single point of connection to a roadway that functions as an arterial. So what it does here is it remains silent about what constitutes secondary access or alternate access. It just says you can't have more than 40, but it doesn't say what constitutes access. Does access to public lands that are east and west constitute access? Does access to the Forest Service road that they talked about that is only seasonally open constitute access? There are a lot of rural areas in the hills where Forest Service roads are only available seasonally. They flood in the spring, they're closed for snow in the winter, but we still use and recognize those roads as access. And there are undeveloped section line right-of-ways. Let's see, I get my, aha, section line right-of-way that runs through here, runs along this side, and runs along this side of the property. I wouldn't suggest that it's developed, but it's available to develop if, if other landowners would choose to do that, that actually own or occupy that. Also, as a technical point, in 2018, there were 77 lots out here. Where my cursor is, is the Estes property. This was two lots, and in 2018, we consolidated it into a single lot for the owner at that time. In 2019, the lot across the street where my cursor is was two lots, and we consolidated it into a single lot at that time. So in 2018, there were 77 lots on this road system, and today we're asking for 77 lots on that road system. So technically, we're not increasing the number from the previous number of plating. Let's see, I am also going to look at, I'm gonna pull another layer, excuse me, another layer up here. Let's see. Is this zoning? Okay. Aha, there we go. Okay, county zoning, and I'm gonna put on the future land use plan. There we go. Okay, there we are, future land use plan. So you guys recently adopted this future land use plan. The area in here that's yellow is designated as rural residential, which means three-acre minimum lots. Now, the outline here, this segment here, of course, it's coming out in yellow, but this part here, there are 320 acres in there. If you divide that by the three-acre minimum. If you divide that by the three-acre minimum designation, that supports a hundred and six lots. So the future land use that was just recently adopted supports the zoning designation that would allow this to be divided into a hundred and six lots at some point. Okay, I'm gonna go back to the Rapid City developed areas. So, and as I pointed out when we started, the city's already approved the preliminary plat and the approved the forty-unit exception with the requirements for sprinkler system, which was agreed to, and wildfire mitigation plan, which has already been completed and indicated that it had met the requirements for that. Lastly, alternate access in a situation like this is a significant burden for one individual landowner. Mr. Estes, who happens to live on this section here, doesn't own or control any property that would provide the secondary or alternate access. So he's not in control of that. When you look at your, um, prong system, is there any physical reason why you can't meet this? Well, obviously, he can't meet this. He doesn't own or control the property, so he has no means to provide the secondary access. This is a lot like the reservoir requirements in Rushmore Ranch Estates, where all of a sudden, the fiftieth or the fifty-first or whatever person is responsible for the additional reservoir capacity. So that burden that benefits that entire development ends up being placed on one individual, and that's what's happening here with this zoning variance. It's being placed on one individual. And I would suggest that that is inherently unfair, that one landowner be required to bear the burden of providing that secondary access for an entire community that already has seventy-five lots there. It's much easier for a homeowners organization or a road district to pool their resources and find an alternate access or develop some type of alternate access, maybe an easement through a neighboring property, than it is for one person to do that. And again, it could be, you know, a quarter million, half million, a million dollars to develop access out of there, and it is entirely unreasonable to place that burden on one individual. What you can do, and what I think the county should do in lieu of this, is to make, um, strides to improve management of an individual's property, wildfire mitigation, and maybe require things like sprinkler systems that save lives and save property. Now, it's easy enough for Mr. Estes to comply with that or any other landowner in that area, but again, the burden of providing that access for the whole community, um, is, is really unwarranted. So number one, the, the definition of what, what constitutes secondary access isn't defined, and it's ambiguous at this point. Number two, technically, we didn't increase the number of lots from two thousand and eighteen. Number three, the future land use, oops, excuse me, didn't mean to do that, future land use actually supports increasing density in this area. And number four, technically, it's very difficult for one individual to meet those requirements. So what we're asking for you today is, in this specific instance, is to support the variance request and maybe reconsider ways or means that you can forward protection, um, or advise people for protection in their particular areas. Um, something similar like the Schroeder Road would affect, um, things like Dark Canyon, Thunderhead Falls Road, High Seagull, Pine Cliff Subdivision. There are dozens of these areas that were developed in the seventies and contained situations like this, and you will see this continue to come forward again. Um, so I'm available if you have any questions, and I don't know if Mr. Estes would like to add a comment to this, but we hope that you would be willing to support the variance today with the measures that we indicated. Thank you.
Any questions of Janelle? Okay, thanks, Janelle. Uh, I do have a speaker's request form from David Johnston. Would you like to come forward?
I had surgery last week. My name's David Johnston, I live on Ridgeland Loop, and I'm the one that sent in the letter on Friday before the Schroeder Fire, raising the concern about the exits out of this area. The day of the Schroeder Fire, I sent an email saying, "I am trapped on Ridgeland Loop," and we really do need to get another way out of here. I see this as two different issues. There's the variance for the splitting the one lot into three, and there's getting another road out. I sent, uh, a letter with aerial photos of possible ways of getting another road out, which would have to be built by the county. One way is very simple, is you go out the top of Ridgeland Loop, follow the section line along with the Forest Service to Old Orchard Road, and you've got your way out. It's maybe a mile and a half. I do think that people should be able to develop their property the way they want, but if the government's going to say, "Okay, we're gonna have this rule," they need to abide by it. But by the same thing, the government needs to abide by the rules it puts in place. This is a zoning violation, if you will, and it's the one that the county is responsible for. So to make, in my opinion, it a win-win for everybody, give them the variance and put in the extra road. Thank you. Oh, by the way, June twenty-third, a lightning strike a hundred and fifty yards behind my house in the National Forest set a fire. Thanks to a neighbor who had his windows open and smelled the smoke and the fast response of the Dottie Fire Department, it was put out and it never made the news. We need another road. Thank you.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Johnston?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Mr. Johnston, how long have you lived in that area?
I moved there in two thousand and fourteen.
Okay, I was just trying to see if you had been there, uh, in nineteen eighty-eight when the Westbury Trails fire went through.
Nope.
'Cause I'm assuming that the fire danger in that general area, in fact, I was one of the first responders to the Westbury, Westbury Trails fire, and it, I'd have to see a map that goes back to nineteen eighty-eight, but I'm just saying, as far as the fire danger, it's probably a lot less now than it was in nineteen eighty-eight, because a lot of that tree canopy has been burnt, and, uh, so I'm just pointing that out.
Yep. The, uh, my cousin lives over in Westbury Trails and evacuated with this last fire. So fortunately, there was only one house lost. The comment about, uh, access or egress, my wife uses a wheelchair around inside the house, so cutting cross country through the forest really isn't an option for us.
No, I understand, but as a commissioner, I'm more unwilling to work with the Forest Service and moving forward, trying to improve that, uh, trail system through Shanks Canyon or some other alternatives.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnston. I have no other speaker request forms. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this item? No, I'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So the staff recommended denial due to the lack of secondary ingress and egress. If the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the staff request, staff recommends no conditions. I would, uh, be in favor of the variance if we included two conditions, and those conditions would be that the owners enter into a covenant agreements to provide wildfire mitigation plans and install sprinkler systems in any new residential construction. I think that would, uh, offset, uh, the forty home rule.
So I have a, a motion?
Well, that was more of a statement.
It was taken as.
I will formally make a, a motion now.
You can clarify now.
Okay, so, so make a motion.
Motion to approve the variance with the two conditions that I just stated.
Okay, um, got a motion and a second by Commissioner La Croix. Further discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
I'll ask you.
I have a question for staff.
Ron.
Oh, Brittany, sorry. Okay, um, question for you, Brittany, since you came up here. I was gonna pick on Jason, but I'll pick on you.
All right.
Uh, how many like this application have we denied in the past, say, four years?
Um, since this went into play, there was one application on Bransky Road that was denied, and there was one for a lot split that was similar to this that the city approved, um, but the county did not, and then there was another plat on Bransky Road, um, that was denied based on this secondary ingress, egress.
So when we denied it and the city approved it, what happened to that one?
Nothing.
Oh, it didn't go forward?
We haven't issued any permits or anything, they haven't been in front of you. Um, just one quick question, um, as far as the covenant agreement, we don't have a way to enforce that, and the city doesn't issue the building permit, we do. So there's some question about how that would work from our office.
Did you hear that, Ron? What's that? What Brittany just said, that, that they don't have any way of enforcing a covenant?
'Cause you stated it as a covenant, instead of requirement for a building permit.
Yeah, we don't have building codes, so we don't do inspections. So how do we know that that's being done, one? And we don't have the enforcement ability if it's a covenant through the city, and I'm not sure, um, in speaking with the state's attorney's office, if the city has authority to enforce building permit requirements in the county. So that's just a question I, for consideration.
You have.
That we are, that I am.
So if we left the word covenant out?
I would think so, 'cause it passed the city with the requirement of fires, with the understanding sprinkled in the fire mitigation, correct?
Yes, yes, those are requirements or agreements that they will have to sign with the city. In terms of the enforceability or the overlap between city and county, I can't say how that works, but there will be a document that the city possesses that says that he's agreeing to the sprinkler systems and the fire mitigation.
Our question is, is who enforces that?
Uh, the city, I believe, 'cause they're the ones that.
Three-mile land.
They went through the city planning and zoning, so.
So Ron, I think, I think I would suggest to you that you look at removing just the word covenant on it, keeping the rest?
That they enter into wildfire mitigation, uh, plan and, uh, install sprinkler systems in all residential homes.
Agreeable with the second? Okay, so we have a motion. Kara?
I've got it.
Understand? Okay?
Got it.
Uh, further discussion?
So, just so I understand, Mr. Chair, it's, it's not a covenant, but it's a requirement that we're putting on as a condition for this particular permit.
Right.
Okay.
Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Item B.
Just a second here. Agenda item B is variance twenty-one seventeen to allow an accessory structure, a garage, to be located in the front yard of a residential zoning district of less than one acre in size. The applicant is Brandon Feinrich. The property owner is Claire O'Kane. Location is nine-four-five-zero Sheridan Lake Road. Property use size is point seven-seven acres. It is sloping and forested, currently zoned suburban residential district. Access is off Sheridan Lake Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. When basing our recommendations, staff uses a two-prong approach that is on the screen. I'll start with prong one. Number one, does it injure the neighborhood? Staff finds no, the request does not appear to be a threat nuisance to the neighborhood. Number two, does it conform to the neighborhood? Yes, detached garages in the front yard are present in this area. However, they are not on lots above one acre, or they are on lots above one acre. Detached garages are permitted with an approved building permit. Number three, does it conform to the general purpose of the zoning ordinance? Staff found no. Zoning ordinance requires that accessory buildings not be located in any required front yard in residential zoning districts less than one acre. Number four, does it confirm, does it conform to the comprehensive plan currently in place? Staff found this was non-applicable. Number five, does it harm public safety, health, or general welfare of the community? Staff found no. Placement of the garage within the front yard does not appear to harm public state, public or community safety. Prong number two determines whether special conditions exist to grant a variance, such as physical conditions. Number one, does a special condition, exceptional narrowness, topography, or sighting or the like, exist on the property? Staff found no. No physical conditions exist that would warrant approval of this variance. As the property sits today, it does contain a single-family residence, as well as the twenty-eight-by-twenty-eight detached garage we're talking about with this variance, as well as an on-site wastewater treatment system. The request was sent for interdepartmental review, and no question or no concerns or comments were noted. Staff's analysis of the request is that on September ninth, twenty-twenty, Pennington County zoning ordinance, Section three-oh-nine, became effective and applied to all new construction within the county. On June first of this year, the applicant's agent, Brandon Feinrich, applied for a building permit for the twenty-eight-by-twenty-eight garage. On June twenty, June second, during final review of this permit, it was determined that the request did not meet the requirements of Section three-oh-nine. That accessory building shall not be located in any required front yard in residential zoning districts less than one acre. Subject property is zoned suburban residential district. On June eighth, staff emailed the applicant's agent to inform him of the requirement, and no response was received. June fifteenth, staff reached out again via phone, and there was no answer and no way to leave a message as the num, as the number's voicemail was full. Again, on June twenty-second, staff emailed the applicant's agent to inform him of the requirement, and there was no response received. July eighth of this year, the applicant's agent visited planning and zoning to inquire about the status of the building permit, and that's when staff informed Mr. Feinrich about the requirement of Pennington County zoning ordinance and that the building permit could not be approved. Uh, Mr. Feinrich informed staff at that time that the garage had already been built, and at that time, he applied for this variance request. Staff recommends denial, as there are no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement or the Pennington County zoning ordinance. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees, staff, uh, recommends two conditions be included. First being that within thirty days, the applicant pays any applicable penalty fees for construction of the garage without an approved building permit, and that this variance only applies to the twenty-eight-by-twenty-eight detached garage.
So Jason, that is the garage?
Yes, sir, that is the garage.
Mr. Chairman, question for staff.
I'll ask her.
Has the same individual owned the property all through this time?
I'm sorry, sir?
Has the same individual owned the property since the building of the home and everything?
No.
No?
No.
When was the, the current owner, the one that's, that built this, when did they take possession of the property? Do you know?
I do not know. No. I can tell you that that house was built in nineteen sixty-two.
I think, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I think I'm going along the same lines as you, Mr. Lester. From what I was reading up on this, what I come up with is the contractor was the one that was being noticed throughout the whole process, if I'm correct, Jason?
Correct, he was, he was the one that applied for the building permit, so that's who he reached out to.
But he, yeah, he was the contact person he applied for, but the actual property owner is different.
That's correct.
Than the contractor. So this is, I don't know how to word that, uh, misconduct from the contractor, is that?
Correct.
Or not responding to the emails, phone calls, uh, finishing up on that, so the property owners are stuck with what, the problem that the contractor created.
Correct.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
You know, when I looked at this, I looked at a few different things, and I hard, I have a hard time identifying what the front yard is and a side yard. This almost looks like a side yard. Is that, is, do they follow the setback requirements from the neighboring lot?
They meet the setback requirements of twenty-five feet.
Another thing I looked at is the land, the building ratio, and normally for residential lot in Rapid City to be five par, or five parcels of land for one parcel of building area. The, the house with the garage is two thousand seventy-six square feet, and so with that, uh, size of lot, for every one hundred square feet of building area, you have sixteen parts of land, so I'm really not too concerned with this variance at all.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I'd move to approve with two conditions, uh, because it wasn't the property owners, uh, who made this, it was the contractor, and I believe we had to redo, move this, it would be unnecessary hardship on the property owners, but I think we're following the spirit of the ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Roskin. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address this? Come on forward, please. Come on forward, please.
Mr. Chairman, just a quick clarification as he's coming up here. Are we having those two conditions on this as well?
Yeah, that's.
Okay, I just want to make sure I understood that.
Yes, my name is Tim Metters. I live at ninety-four twenty Sheridan Lake Road. I am Cora's neighbor to the east. Uh, my concern is. Um, like myself and a lot of other landlords. What's going to be stored behind the garage? I usually throw everything I don't want to look at and. Outside. But. The existing fence is a chain link fence, four foot. It sits right on the property line. Uh, Cora does have, landlord does have bushes on that side. But. Eventually, she decides to store whatever over there. I'm going to be looking right at it. So I would like to suggest. Uh, putting up a, um. Six-foot privacy fence. And since existing fence is on the property line. I'm more than willing to share the cost.
Have you by chance, uh, made that suggestion to the?
Yes, I could, I talked to Cora about it this morning.
Okay.
And I would just like to have her and I work something out. But I just wanted it noted so that. You know, we don't come to terms. Um, I have some kind of legal. Recourse.
Yeah. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for coming up. Any other, um, public comment on this? Come ahead.
I'm Brandon Fenrick, the contractor that built the garage. On June first, I had come down to the county to apply for a building permit. I had brought a, um, a plot plan of how the house sat on the lot. And I also had drawn in there right where we wanted to build this garage that Ms. Cora had marked out on her land. And, uh, I had talked to a lady by the name of Mindy Martinez. Now, my understanding is Mindy Martinez is kind of new with the county commission, I believe, this year. Nothing was ever said at that particular day that a variance was going to need to be needed for this property. My main concern is, um, when I had showed up was that Sheridan Lake Road was all tore up because that's where they're doing all that road construction. And I had no idea where my property pins were in the front. And after we discussed that with Mindy, um, she says it looks like you're, uh, it's not going to be a problem because you're eight foot from the side property and twenty-five foot from the front. So as of my knowledge, I, I didn't realize that I was going to be doing anything incorrect. Um, she, she did say that, um, yeah, everything looks like it's, it's a goal. Um, but she did say that, uh, you shouldn't build anything on there until you get your paperwork and that she said it would take three to fourteen days. Um, we did all of the work ourselves, all the dirt work, the cement work, um, framing, uh, everything except the shingling, uh, virtually. And, um. I asked her, I said, well, I want to get going on my, on my foundation. Uh, because I have time to, that, that's why I'm down here today, so I'm hoping I can get started today. And, uh, she said, well, you, yeah, you, you, you should wait until you get your paperwork, okay? Well, time got away from me. I didn't realize that it was going to be an issue by any means because it didn't sound like there was any means of it being an issue. I, I, um, kept waiting for, um. The paperwork to be sent to me. I live in Hill City to be in my mailbox. Well. Um, as, as he said on, on, uh, July eighth, I finally come in and I asked the, the, the county, why haven't I received my building permit? And that's when they said that I was denied. On that particular day, I asked them, I said, well, why didn't somebody notify me? And it wasn't Mindy that I had talked to, it was another gal there and she said, well, we tried to email you. I said, email you? I've checked my emails every single morning. Nobody ever sent me an email. And she said, well, it probably got sent to your spam. Because I checked all the way through that last month while I was standing right there in front of her. I said, I have no recollection of this. And as far as a phone call goes, maybe they did try to call me, but I never received a phone call. And as far as I know, my, my email or my voicemails were always available. I also made the comment that. Where we're, where we're sitting at, I have the name on the back of my truck that sits right out on Sheridan Lake Road that there, there's county people that drive by every single day that are working on the road. I said, somebody could have come, you know, and, and just stopped and said, hey, maybe something isn't kosher here that you maybe should, should, uh, go back to the county and ask. Um, I, it's, it's right on the backside of my pickup, which is parked right up by the road. So I guess I want to say, uh. It's been a learning experience for me because I'm a young builder. I apologize that this, that I'm actually sitting here because I didn't think that I was doing anything wrong, but I did my due diligence on June first. And then I was kind of shocked to find out on July eighth that. I was denied on this re, uh, uh, of this building permit. So, um, with that being said.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner LaCroy.
And thanks for coming up and explaining your side. You could have sat there and been quiet because it's, it passed. But I mean, that helps us understand what happened because I made the comment of misconduct by the co, contractor misconduct. You explaining your side helps me understand what happened. I think there was some miscommunication on both sides probably. And ended up, or more, probably more so on yours, knowing that you shouldn't have done anything without the actual paper in hand, but.
Understood.
Uh, you know what I'm saying? But, uh, I think it's a live and learned experience here today, and I think both sides are going to learn from that.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So then, when this was being constructed, what, there, there was no building permit per se on the, on the structure? I, I'm still in favor of the variance, but in those two conditions, I'm trying to figure out if we want to add that third condition relative to the privacy fence.
And, Mr. Chairman, I was going to tack on with Ron as he's talking about that. I, I think it would be a, a good show of, um. What's the word I'm looking for? I don't want to say remorse, but you know, realizing that there was an error there, maybe you should help out, smooth out that situation between the two neighbors and that fencing. Is that what you're kind of thinking there, Ron?
Right.
It, it, it'd go a long way with, with us in that aspect, at least from my, my perspective.
So you want to offer a substitute motion?
I'll offer a substitute motion that we include, uh, one-third con, uh, th, third condition that would be to, uh, install a privacy fence along that, uh. Uh, property line of the gentleman that was the first speaking.
Would it be easier to do a friendly amendment? The motion maker and second is okay with it?
What's that?
That would be fine. He, he, instead of making a substitute, he's talking about making a friendly amendment.
Uh, okay, I, uh.
I think you need to, uh, the, the one thing I think you need to clarify is that it doesn't need to be a privacy fence along the entire property line. Um, I think what we're talking about is the privacy fence basically from the, uh, from the corner of the house and that would be the, um. South, southwest corner of the house to the lot line? Is that what I'm looking at where the privacy fence would be?
But my understanding i- is there already is a privacy fence for the most part up until the back of the neighbor's house? And there's probably about, I, I don't know, maybe.
Okay, well, my motion would be to install that, a privacy, privacy fence, uh, just along that portion of the garage that would, uh. Give some type of a buffer between the, this residence or this garage and the, uh, neighboring property.
Okay.
So from the southwest corner of the house to the lot line, is that correct?
Actually, the motion was made by Commissioner LaCroy.
Right, in a second.
Yeah.
I know, that's what I'm.
So that's, that's what he's asking. He actually made the motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
And he's offering a friendly amendment. He's looking for a friendly amendment.
I'm waiting for, yeah.
Okay.
And I'm waiting for clarification. From, because the property owner is here, so she, she could help us out.
Thank you for hearing us. I appreciate that. Currently, the fence in question is from here, approximately here. Up to here.
I see.
And that is what, it's my understanding is being proposed to turn into a privacy area of the fence.
Okay.
And it's something I told him that we could certainly consider and discuss further.
And he was willing to share the expenses, if I heard that right from.
Yes.
To be a split between the two. Quite frankly, I don't know why we would have to get involved.
Yeah.
You, you both sitting here, right here, that both agree to it?
Well. We'll work on it. I mean, I'm not going to do it tomorrow, but yes, we can work toward that.
What I asked Cora this morning is.
Come on up.
We can add a privacy fence within a year.
Yes, what I suggested with Cora is that we do it sometime within the next year.
Okay.
I don't know how that would work expenses-wise. I'm not opposed to doing it. But expenses-wise, depending on the cost, I don't know how that would work. But I am open to discussion and consideration and maybe if it doesn't work within a year, we could push it out a little bit and we could see.
Yes, I'm, yeah, I'm open to that, you know, I just want to work.
I think we'll work together. Tim and I have worked together pretty good in this.
Okay. You're fine with your motion as it originally was?
Motion, let them.
Okay.
But without the third condition.
Right.
Just the two conditions stated.
Yep. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Good, thank you, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Item C. All right. Item C is variance twenty-one dash eighteen to allow an accessory structure, a carport to be located in the front yard of a residential zoning district less than one acre in size. The applicant and landowners are Melvin Lutz and Lorraine Baker. The location is one zero five eight one Dogwood Lane, located approximately a tenth of a mile south of the intersection of Wheaton Road and Dogwood Lane. Again, the property size is point five seven acres. It is flat zoned suburban residential district. Access is off Dogwood Lane and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, staff uses a two-pronged approach to base their recommendations for any variance. Prong one determines whether granting a variance runs counter to the public interest. I will start with number one in staff's responses. Number one, does it injure the neighborhood? Staff found no, the request does not appear to be a threat of nuisance to the neighborhood. Number two, does it conform to the neighborhood? Yes, there are other accessory structures in the area. The requested use appears to conform to the neighborhood as there are other accessory structures in front yards. Number three, does it conform to the general purpose of the zoning ordinance? Staff found no, the zoning ordinance allows accessory structures in front yards as long as their property is over one acre in size. Subject property is approximately half an acre. Number four, does it conform to the comprehensive plan currently in place? Staff found this to be not applicable. Number five, does it harm public safety, health, or general welfare of the community? Staff found no, the request does not harm the public safety, health, or general welfare of the community. Prong two determines whether special conditions exist to grant a variance. Number one, does a special condition exceptional narrowness, topography, sighting, or the like exist on the property? Staff found no, no special condition exists. However, buildable area adjacent to or behind the residence is limited. As the property sits today, it does contain a double-wide mobile home, a twenty-eight by thirty-two detached garage, a twelve by fourteen tool shed, as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system. The request was sent out for an inter, interdepartmental review and no major comments or concerns were received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is requesting a place of carport on the subject property. There is limited room behind and to the side of the house. The proposed carport will meet the twenty-five foot front yard setback. And there are other properties in the area that have accessory structures in their front yards. And with that, staff recommends denial of variance twenty-one dash eighteen as there are no special conditions that exist on the property that would excuse legal enforcement of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. However, if the board of adjustment disagrees and decides to approve the request, staff would add the condition that this variance only applies to the proposed carport.
Any comments from the commission? I have a couple of questions. As the property owner here, would you step up, sir, and state your name?
Good morning. My name is Melvin Lutz.
Okay, uh. This ca, this carport, is that going to be, uh, what, what type of construction is that going to be?
Um, B metal.
Like a, and I'm assuming. Uh, can you put the GIS map up, Jason? So when I'm looking at the GIS map, it appears that you've got some kind of a existing asphalt pad there?
Yes.
Is that where this would be located?
Yes.
And I'm assuming that pad is about twenty feet across.
How much?
Twenty feet?
Uh. I think it might be just, yeah, that's pretty close.
So the carport itself would be twenty by?
Twelve by twenty-one.
Twelve by twenty-one, okay. And when I look at this, uh, how would it be anchored to the, how would it be anchored to your site, the carport?
Um, if we can pull that back up, please.
A lot of those are just anchored with a, a large screw type device. And so I'm looking at it, technically you could put a tent up.
Well, that's not one.
I understand, but I'm just saying that, uh, I don't have a problem with the. You know, with that size of a carport and you've already got the existing asphalt pad there, so.
Yeah. Access would be to the north coming off, uh, Dogwood Lane?
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move to approve VA twenty-one dash nine with one condition because I believe granting the variance. Other accessory units in that, in that area fits in. And, uh. To deny him would, would deny him the use of his property.
Second. Got a motion and second. Is that, is that the correct number though?
Item D. VA twenty-one dash nineteen?
Item C.
Item C.
Eighteen. VA twenty-one eighteen.
Item C.
Oh. Sorry, VA twenty-one dash eighteen.
Okay, okay.
Same comments though, matches the area and it would be a, uh. Hardship for the property owner.
Yeah, so I got a motion by Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Alasen. Uh, further discussion?
Is that for approval?
For approval.
Yeah.
Is there anybody in the public wishing to address this? Hearing none, is there further discussion by the commission? Hearing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on item D.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, if I can take those from you. Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
And they'll have that signed too.
Okay, yeah, you can take it up to the counter.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Of course, take care.
Agenda item D is variance twenty-one dash nineteen to reduce the side yard setback from twenty-five feet to zero feet. The applicants and landowners are John and Emily Colasa. Location is nine nine one zero West Highway forty-four, located north of the intersection of West Highway forty-four and Lindsay Drive. Property is two point eight two acres, sloping and forested, currently zoned agriculture district. Access is off West Highway forty-four and there's no special flood hazard area on the subject property. Again, staff utilizes a two-prong, two-pronged approach to base their recommendations. Prong one, whether granting the variance runs counter to the public interest. Starting with number one, does it injure the neighborhood? No. The request does not appear to be a threat of nuisance to the neighborhood. Number two, does it conform to the neighborhood? Yes, there are other accessory structures in the area. The requested use appears to conform to the neighborhood. However, accessory structures in the area appear to meet, uh, required twenty-five foot setbacks. Number three, does it conform to the general purpose of the zoning ordinance? Staff found, no, the zoning ordinance requires a twenty-five foot setback from all property lines. Does it conform to the comprehensive plan currently in place? Staff found this to be not applicable. Number five, does it harm the public safety, health, or general welfare of the community? Staff found that, no, it does not. Prong number two determines whether special conditions exist to grant the variance. Number one, does a special condition such as exceptional narrowness, topography, sighting of the like, exist on the property? Staff found that, no, no special condition exists. However, the structure was legally non-conforming prior to the applicant removing a portion of the, of the structure and replacing it. As the property sits today, it does contain a single wide mobile home, uh, twenty, twenty by twenty-four detached garage and an eighteen by thirty-three detached garage. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review and no major comments or concerns were received. As you can see on the screen, uh, this is the layout of the applicant's property. This is the property line in question and this is the structure also in question. I went out this morning and took a few pictures. I have on my promise. Give me one second. This is the original structure on the left. Uh, this I believe was a lean-to type of structure before. You can see where I've indicated where the property line, uh, is best guess where it's at, between these poles of the fence line. Um, apparently the, the carport, the lean-to was dilapidated and falling down. Uh, the applicant did not get a building permit. He just went out and kind of replaced the structure the best he could. Came in afterwards, thinking that he needed a building permit and he was correct. Um, with that, staff recommends denial of variance twenty-one nineteen. There are no special conditions on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of the Pennington County zoning ordinance. However, if the Board of Adjustment decides to approve the request, staff would add the following conditions, and I believe the conditions that you have in front of you only include one, that this, that this variance only applies to the subject structure. However, I would like to add one condition that the applicant receives an approved building permit and pay any associated penalty fees.
Commissioner La Croix?
Um, that would be my motion. I, I had actually said this motion on the previous agenda, but would add, uh, building permit fee and, uh, penalty fee would be included on this. I can repeat that again, care of you need it.
That'd be great.
Because pretty much it was just, uh, moved to approve VA twenty-one dash nineteen, uh, with, now we got two conditions?
Yes, sir.
And one of them would be application fee, building permit fee, and pay the late fees, or penalty fees, not late.
That the applicant receives an approved building permit and pay any associated building permit fees.
And, uh, because I believe granting the variance, I, there's other accessory structures in, in the area and I think, uh, by not, uh, I don't think, I think it's going to create unnecessary hardship from the use of his property if we tell him to, to take it down, so.
There's a second.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Uh, so that's, uh.
One second, Ron. Excuse me. I need you to either get a second or?
Second.
I've got a second. Go ahead.
Okay, excuse me, Mr. Chair. Is that, uh, the current building that's there now?
Yes, sir.
And is that the foundation that was there for the original building, that building?
By the looks of it, I would say no. I don't, I don't know if the applicant is in the audience. Nope, yep, there is.
I think part of it is, but part of it is not.
Part of it is the reg, I am John Colassee.
Okay.
Part of it is the original foundation, part of it is not.
Okay, that was my question.
Further discussion, questions? Got a motion in a second. Is there any public comments relative to this? Saying none, back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Item E.
Agenda item E is variance twenty-one dash twenty to reduce the side yard setback from twenty-five feet to fourteen feet. The applicants and landowners are William and Christine Barber. Property is located approximately one point two miles west of the intersection of West Highway forty-four and Dark Canyon Road. Property is one point four nine acres. It is forested and steep sloping. Currently zoned agriculture district. It is vacant of any structures or utilities at the time. Access is off Dark Canyon Road and there is special flood hazard area on the property. Again, staff uses a two-pronged approach to base their recommendations, starting with prong one. Number one, does it injure the neighborhood? Staff found, no. The request does not appear to be a threat of nuisance to the neighborhood. Number two, does it conform to the neighborhood? Yes. Garages are typical throughout this area and are per, are a permitted use with an approved building permit. The requested use is an accessory structure as a primary structure and is allowed with a conditional use permit. Number three, does it conform to the general purpose of the zoning ordinance? Staff found, no, the zoning ordinance requires a twenty-five foot setback from all property lines in an agriculture district. Number four, does it conform to the comprehensive plan currently in place? Staff found, no, the future land use is identified as ranch yet. This zoning district also requires a twenty-five foot setback from all property lines. Number five, does it harm public safety, health, or general welfare of the community? Staff found, no, placement of the garage within, the required setback does not appear to harm the public or community. Prong number two determines whether special conditions exist to grant the variance. Uh, in this case, staff does find that topography is an excavated slope consisting of one point four nine acres. Physical conditions exist that would warrant approval of this request. One A, uh, if a special condition exists, does enforcing the zoning ordinance create an unnecessary hardship? Staff found, yes, the buildable area on the property is limited due to topography. And one B, if a special circumstance exists, does granting the variance observe the ordinance's spirit while doing substantial justice? Staff found that, yes, the topographical limitations provide minimal buildable arrow, area on the subject property. As it sits today, the property is vacant of any structures or utilities. There is a conditional use permit that was approved this year, um, allowing an accessory structure prior to a principal structure. And there is also an approved stormwater permit for disturbing more than ten thousand square feet on the subject property. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. County Highway stated that they're typically opposed to setback variances. However, the, the variance that's being requested does not abut the, uh, the right of way. It's actually, this is the property line up here to the north. This is the requested setback. They're reducing to fourteen feet in purple. So County Highway is not opposed to this request. Um, staff's analysis of the request is that the buildable area on the lot is limited due to topography. This limitation was verified by staff through a site visit. Uh, this is a top, topographical map that shows a significant, uh, slope throughout the entire subject property. And this is a picture that I took while I was out on a site visit. You can see the excavated portion of the property, uh, just the level of surface for the structure. And again, with that, staff recommends approval.
Any public comments relative to this? Commissioner La Croix.
Move for approval.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve. Motion by Commissioner La Croix, second by Commissioner Lassiter. Uh, further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Need a motion to adjourn the Board of Adjustment and reconvene to the Board of Commissioners?
Move to adjourn Board of Adjustment and reconvene as the Board of Commissioners.
Second.
I got a motion from Commissioner Ross Connect, second by Commissioner Lassiter. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Consent calendar, Brittany.
All right, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following item. Item F is minor plat, NPL twenty-one dash forty-seven for Lorraine and Doug Smith. This land serving as the agent and approval is recommended.
Move to approve.
Got a motion by Commissioner Ross Connect to approve. And, um, second by Commissioner Lassiter.
I was just waiting to make sure that there wasn't somebody who had a statement for it.
Didn't see, nobody came up? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item G.
Item G is road construction within a section line right of way, CS twenty-one dash zero seven. The applicant is Travis Green. The current zoning of the property is agriculture district. They are asking to not improve the section line to ordinance fourteen standards. This is currently what the property looks like. If you look at where that, uh, large structure is, the property is just to the right of that, the approach. And if you look here, that's the road to the north that's coming into that property. So this is a portion of the section line that they're looking to improve. Uh, and that's the portion of the road that's coming in to the property. Uh, this was routed around through the interdepartmental review process. The highway department is opposed to waiving ordinance fourteen standards for road constructed in the section line right of way. Um, any road built within the section line should be built to ordinance fourteen standards. Um, they are looking to continue this sixteen-foot road and gravel it in the same manner that it is running from the north. Um, the next request is a request to waive the requirements of the ordinance fourteen. Um, this road will only be used to access this one property there, and currently that property has a conditional use permit, uh, to allow just a shop building. So there's no residents on that property right now. Um, so they need this road construction in the section line to construct the road so they can get their building permit uh, for their shop building. So staff is recommending approval of the road construction within the section line right of way, which includes constructing the section line right of way to county ordinance fourteen standards with nine conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner La Croix.
Move for approval.
Second motion and a second. Uh, uh, Travis Green, are you here?
Uh, his father is here. And that, his father is in the audience.
Anything you want to say or just answer questions or? Okay, okay. Uh, any other public comment in regard to this? Hearing none, back to the commission. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Next item is to, not to build to ordinance fourteen standards.
Correct.
But the same property.
Yes, item H is request not to submit engineered road construction plans and to waive the ordinance fourteen standards. Uh, he would like to construct the road, um, to waive the requirements to construct a turnaround and the road width of twenty-four feet. He would like to construct the road at sixteen feet with a six-inch gravel base.
Joe Miller. So I, I don't remember. Brittany, when was that sixteen-foot one? Because that was in front of the commission not, well, less than a year ago, I think.
Within the year.
So you guys waived the twenty-foot width, but required the sixteen-foot with the two-foot ditches. Um, so I would request, if a variance is granted, that you follow suit with what's currently there. Um, this is eventually going to go down to forty-four. That's all primed for development. There's, there's multiple developments, you know, just to the west of it that are going in and the city's just going to grow that direction eventually, so.
Down to forty.
What's that?
Down to Highway forty.
Highway forty-four.
It goes to forty-four?
Yes. Yep. Yep. So the parcel that you're speaking about is right here. Here is Longview Road, which is the county road. Um, then your Highway forty-four is actually down here. So at some point in the, in the future, maybe not in my career, your guys' careers, but at some point that section line will go all the way through.
Okay.
There's another major section line here at two thirty-third that it very well could connect with at some point also.
Yeah, sorry, I was looking at the wrong picture.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
So Joe, I was thinking, you know, where they're asking about waiving, I mean, I could see continuing on with what, what's there right now.
Correct.
Traffic probably provides for that, but I was thinking, if you think the future is for it to go down, I'm not sure about, wasn't sure about waiving the turn, like the turnaround. You know, if it ends up being a dead end, someone goes down that road, they usually have a hammerhead or a colosseum to turn around. Was that part of, part of the, what they want to waive is that too, I think?
I believe they want the, the turnaround waived if it is for just that property, you know, it, it's just a, a matter of time before the rest of this stuff gets developed. Now that there is a road opened up there, it opens up that opportunity for development. When, I don't know, but, you know, in the meantime, I don't know how much the turnaround is going, how much good a turnaround is going to do.
Yeah. I, the reason why I ask is because like, and some of these people are, they're doing the hammerhead turnaround where they can just pull in and then back out and go, not instead of doing the big turnaround one.
You know, and I.
If it doesn't, we don't think the traffic count's worth, I'd be willing to waive that.
The only thing I'll point out, and I don't want to speak for Jerome, but, you know, if he, if he was here, he'd want the, the turnaround for fire and ambulance. So, that's that.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Ross Connect.
So, Joe, that picture that we had, the road, I think it was a road going north? That, uh, that existing one, is that sixteen-foot surface?
Correct, it was a sixteen-foot surface, uh, with six-inch gravel surface. The, the ditches, this, the thought process in the sixteen-foot is it will be able to, to be expanded in the future to meet county or standards if there is future development, relatively easy.
So what they're asking is basically they're just to build something similar to this. And for now, basically just a driveway.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Anybody, any member of the public want to address this? Yes, Mr. Green, come on up and identify yourself.
This existing road that was built.
Okay, and your, and your name is?
Vern Green.
Vern?
Yeah, this is my son's property.
Okay.
This existing road that was built in here, I don't know if it matters to the county or not, but it's all wrong. The road runs like this. They cut the ditches straight down, built the road, that steel culvert you see in there, all that does is allow the water to run from one ditch to the other side. There's no place for the water to get out of them ditches. Every time it rains, the ditch is set completely full of water. Now, the road, do we want to build for that three hundred and fifty feet? There's a slight upgrade. If we put the ditches about three feet deep and six to eight feet wide, it's not going to run a lot of water, but it's not going to hold any water. Where this road here, the whole thing holds water. There's no place for it to go.
Comments, Joe?
We don't have any. You know, typically we don't do any, any, uh, inspection or anything like that and it's not a county road that's county maintained. So it's, it's ultimately a, a road that's a driveway. It, it is in a section line, but ultimately it's a driveway. So it's up to the, the individuals to maintain it. I envision there's probably going to be a road district there at some point to, to maintain that road.
So we're, we're not maintaining it, that's, okay, so that's, yeah.
Yeah.
So I can build this road on the plans that I give you? It'll be the sixteen-foot top. The road ditches will be three to three and a half feet deep. The slopes will be four to one on both sides. Does that work for you guys?
That exceeds the drainage.
Okay.
Because our, our, uh, ordinance fourteen sets two-foot ditches with three to one in slopes and forty-one back slopes, so.
Now, another question I have and you, I might have to contact the county office for those, you know, the county office for this. Where we're going to put the approach in, according to the county specs, you're supposed to have an eighteen-inch culvert in there. The road kind of comes up and then drops down like this. Where we're going to put the approach into the property, uh, if I put an eighteen-inch culvert in there, there will never be any water that'll ever run through it.
So the, the, it's not a mandatory eighteen-inch culvert. It's by location. And Sean Smith, when you submit for a building permit, they'll ask you to come get an approach permit, which then Sean will come out and inspect it and say if it needs a culvert or if it doesn't.
Okay.
And we'll go through that process when we get the approach.
How does the county inspect this road when we're done with it?
No.
Okay. All right.
Not currently.
That's all I have to say.
Okay.
Thanks, sir. Is there a motion on this?
I'd move for approval.
We got a motion from Commissioner La Croix, second by Commissioner Oskanek. Uh further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Adam, aye.
Good morning, Commissioner Chutima Sabun, Planning Department. This item is conditional use permit CU twenty-one thirty-nine to allow an RV park on the subject property with up to six RV hookups for friends and family. The applicants are Paul and Carol Nieman. Uh Mr. D, Mr. Nieman is here in the audience if you have any question. The property is sixteen point seven acres. Access is off of Custer Gout Road. There is no special flood hazard on the subject property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the board may consider in the in the review of conditional use permit applications. The criteria are on the screen. Staff will read the findings. Criteria one, allowing this conditional use permit should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. The applicant stated that the proposed RV park is for personal, non-commercial use. The applicant stated that his friends and family may visit and stay in the RV park no more than two months. Staff cannot predict the effect of the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria three, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. The criteria four, the propo, the property is currently vacant of any structure. A private well will be a source of water. The applicant plans to install an onsite waste water treatment system. Per the applicant email, he cannot find a licensed septic installer to install the the system on the property. Criteria five, access will be off of Custer Gout Road, and approved approach permit from the county highway is required. Criteria six, the property is zone agriculture district. RV parks may be allowed with an approved conditional use permit. Criteria seven, the future land use of the property is ranch head district. Allowing this conditional use permit should be consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The request was routed for inter interdepartmental review. County Highway Department stated that an approach permit must be obtained. This will be addressed as a condition of approval. No other major concerns or objection from other departments were received. The subject property has an existing conditional use permit CU sixteen thirty. It was approved in two thousand sixteen to build an accessory structure prior to a primary structure on the subject property. However, the the structure has not been built. The planning commission approved the extension of conditional use permit CU sixteen thirty in December of last year to allow the applicant time to build the structure with a time limit of one year or this conditional use permit being reviewed and ended. On March the, uh on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one, the applicant applied for a building permit for a pole barn and an onsite waste water treatment system construction permit, but the paperwork was not completed. Therefore, both permits have not been approved. On June fifteen, twenty twenty-one, the applicant applied for this request to allow a personal RV park on the subject property. He stated that the RV park is for his friends and family when they visit the area. It is not commercial, it is not for commercial use. Staff performed a site visit and verified that there is no structure on the subject property. On July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, the planning commission approved this conditional use permit CU twenty-one thirty-nine with twenty conditions. Since then, staff has been made aware of the dirt work on the property. Staff would like to add a condition stating that the applicant obtains a stormwater permit for the dirt work. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this conditional use permit with twenty-one conditions.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Oskanek. I was going to make the motion to approve with the twenty-one conditions. Second. Got a motion to approve. And a second. So is there a is there an entrance into this property already? I'm not seeing.
At the right now, it's it um it, the property does not have an approach permit yet, but the applicant, when we when we talked, this is the um the proposed driveway to the property. And yep, this is the proposed, right here.
Mr. Chair, so I think that's the access road from three eighty-five to the Marina Actola?
Yep, this is Custer Gout Road right here.
Okay. And I was. Okay, okay. Got a motion, a second. Is there any public comment relative to this? Hearing none, back to the commission. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Adam J.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Thinnison, Deputy Planning Director. Item J is Layout Plan twenty-one dash forty-five to reconfigure lot lines and create lots two A one and two B one of Battle Creek Mountain Estates. The applicant and landowner is Gerard Milner. His surveyor is All Aspects Incorporated. I believe he is in the audience if you have any questions for him. Location of the subject property is one three seven oh four highway forty. It is nine point five four acres. Access is off highway forty. There's no special flood hazard area on the problem on the property, and it is currently zoned rural residential district. As of today, lot two A, uh the slide here shows the current property on the left, proposed lots on the right. Currently, lot two A is three point zero two acres, contains a single-family residence as well as an onsite wastewater treatment system and a conditional use permit approved May thirteenth, two thousand nineteen for a vacation home rental. Lot two B is on the right. It's six point five two acres, and it is vacant of any structures or utilities. Proposed lots on the right-hand side of the screen, lot two A one will become six point zero three one acres, containing the single-family residence, the CUP, and the onsite wastewater treatment system. Lot two B one will be three and a half acres and will be vacant of any structures or utilities. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review, and no objections or concerns were received. And with that, staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area and recommends approval with conditions.
So move.
Got a motion to approve, second by Commissioner Laster. Is there any public comment in regard to this? Seeing none, back to the commission for the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item K.
Item K is Layout Plan twenty-one dash forty-eight to subdivide and create lots two R one and two R two of Grover subdivision. The applicants and landowners are Kevin and Jeanette Grover. The location of the property is one three three eight one Silver Mountain Road. It is ten point six five acres, currently zoned rural residential district. Access to the proposed lot is currently unknown at this time. Flood hazard, uh there is none present on the subject property. As it sits today, the subject property is on the left-hand side of your screen. It is ten point six five acres, contains a single-family residence as well as a twenty-eight by thirty-eight equipment building, three guest cottages, onsite wastewater treatment system. Proposed lots on the right-hand side of the screen in blue is two R two or two R one, sorry. Seven point six five acres will contain the single-family residence, the equipment building, all three guest cottages, and the onsite wastewater treatment system. Lot two R two in red will be three acres and vacant of any structures or utilities. Uh one thing to note about this layout plan that he has sketched out is that there is no access identified, uh no easements or anything like that to gain access to lot two R two, and that is included as a condition of approval. Uh was sent off interdepartmental review. The county environmental uh planner came back and said that he does have a valid onsite wastewater treatment system. And uh staff did reach out to the applicant to inquire about the old cabins that he has listed on his layout plan, and he says that those are just used as storage. They were built as part of the civilian conservation corps effort uh in the fifties and sixties. There is no plumbing, there's no electricity run to those, so staff has no concerns with that. Um no other objections or concerns were received from the interdepartmental review, and staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area, and staff recommends approval with conditions.
Any public comment on this? Back to the commission, is there a motion?
Move for approval.
I got a motion, do I have a second?
Figure.
A second. Further discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item L.
Item L is Vacation of Easement VA twenty-one dash zero one for John and Emily Kalisa. This land surveying is an agent. Uh the request is to vacate and relocate a portion of the waterline easement up on lot M three of Deer Park subdivision. Um the property is two point eight two acres. It's currently zoned agriculture district. Uh this was routed around through an interdepartmental review process. There were no comments or concerns received. Uh the reason for this request is the existing waterline was not put within the boundaries of the current easement. By vacating and relocating this portion of the easement, the waterline will fall in the easement. In addition, the request will bring an existing structure that was built within the easement into compliance. So staff is recommending approval of this vacation of easement with one condition.
Move to approve.
I've got a motion from Commissioner Laster to approve. Is there a second?
Figure.
Second by Commissioner La Croix. Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item M.
Item M is Vacation of Plat VP twenty-one dash zero four to vacate plat notes number seven, number eight, number nine, number thirteen, and number fourteen for lot one, block three of the Mountain Meadows subdivision. The applicant and owner is Brian and Michelle Lindsay. The property is three point zero seven acres. It's currently in a planned unit development, and access to this property is off of Eleanor Drive. Uh this was routed around to the interdepartmental review. Uh there was only one item of concern that came back from the environmental planner who had indicated concerns about um no, or vacating the plat note for the ATU unit. But staff is recommending approval of this vacation of plat with two conditions, that only notes number seven, nine, thirteen, and fourteen be vacated and only for lot one, block three of Mountain Meadows, and then all necessary resolutions for this vacation be recorded. So there's quite a bit of history on this one. This one is the third property in the subdivision that you have seen that has requested the same vacation of notes on the plat. Um.
Yeah.
Just for clarification, um there was subdivision regulation variances or variances um for this for the water storage.
And did we re, chairman? Did we re, did we um remove any of those before on any of the other ones?
Yes, the only one that was never, wasn't removed, and it wasn't removed on this one or recommended to remove was the ATU unit. Um they required for the PE stamp, and all of those things were removed. And I believe this sprinkler system, they are going to do in the ATU unit, similar to the other two requests.
Move for approval.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second for approval from Commissioner La Croix and second by Commissioner Oskanek. Uh any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item N.
Item N is Preliminary Plat PPL twenty-one dash forty-six to create lot twelve R revised, a block five of the Northdale subdivision. The landowners are Jess and Kendra Kellogg. The surveyor is Davis Engineering. Uh the property is one point two four acres, and it currently zoned suburban residential. This lot will straddle both Pennington and Mead counties. Uh there was, this was routed around through the interdepartmental review process. The highway department did receive the approach permits that were necessary on Merritt Road, but a variance for a second approach from Saratoga Road must be obtained from the Board of Commissioners. This property contains a single-family residence, deck, and garage. Uh staff finds no significant issues with this app, with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses. So staff is recommending approval with six conditions.
Move for approval.
Figure. Got a motion from Commissioner La Croix, second from Commissioner Laster to approve. Uh further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item sixteen. Uh items from the commission.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I guess I'll go first. I got a couple of things to add if you don't mind. So uh. I'll keep it short, cause I, I actually, I lost my notepad, so I don't have all my notes. So I'm going to go on my memory, so it will be short. Um I went out to Wall and visited with the economic development team out there and also with the city council. Uh one of the things that we talked about was the discretionary um formula that was discussed with Elevate. And from their perspective, hearing the the um the proposal for the twenty forty sixty eighty one hundred discretionary um formula for tax uh didn't seem to impact them as, you know, as they were thinking. So they wouldn't oppose it, from what I understood, uh if we decided to move forward with it. And I think that's something that Elevate was going to visit with us today after Commissioner and Hickock and my meeting with Elevate that same week, but earlier, so. But uh I think that's what uh he was going to visit with us about today. No, oh, it wasn't.
Overall, this is what Elevate's working on, presentation.
Okay, well, then I guess I I assumed that that's what he was going to talk about. But uh outside of that, uh I also was at the um I think that was probably about it, other than the healthcare community board, but that's on our commission stuff.
Okay.
Yeah.
Lloyd, anything?
The only thing I'd like to bring up is probably, you know, maybe towards the end of, before we close our meeting today, we we take another moment of silence for Representative David Losz. I did attend his funeral uh Saturday, and uh it it was a very well-attended funeral. That would be my only thing to report on.
Okay, Ron?
Uh had my first meeting with the Love Inc., which would be in the name of Christ in Hill City. It was uh just kind of an icebreaker. I got to meet the director who's out of Rapid City, and yesterday they had a meeting, but I had a conflict of interest, I couldn't make that. But that was the Sturgis uh folks that were involved with that organization on the Sturgis. So I will plan on making the uh, on the eighteenth, that's that would be the next meeting. But evidently, they uh being on the commission, that might be able to help that program get established. being on the commission, that, uh, might be able to help that program get established in Hill City. Yesterday I did meet with Todd Seaman. He's the director of D O- South Dakota DOT in Rapid City. Rich Zacker, who, uh, is the Southern Hills head of the South Dakota DOT, and then Logan Grand. She's a transportation alternatives engineer out of here, and we met with them and some citizens from Hill City who want to develop a bike route from Hill City, from the Mickelson Trail in Hill City to Sheridan Lake, and there's some grant money available through this federal grant money that'd be administrated through the South Dakota DOT. Uh, we're looking at about five point five miles of trail that, uh, and so right now, we're probably, or they're probably looking at, uh, the engineering and what route that would take. There's gonna be some, uh, hills to climb on that, but they're gonna need either a city or a county to participate in that, uh, according to Logan, so. I was asked to go in behalf of the, uh, as the county commissioner. This is still in its infancy, but, uh, actually, Rich Zacker from Custer, uh, Custer did one a few years back. It's, it was three miles that the state participated in, and, uh, you know, it, it seems to be working out pretty good. And so I think, uh, we'll sa- have to see where it goes, but yesterday, there again, it was just an icebreaker. That's pretty much it for me.
Board or, um, committee reports, uh, back to Travis.
So I went to the Elevate Rapid City Board, and, uh, they gave a pretty good overview of what has been going on in, uh, the county and all in the Black Hills for development. There's a lot of growth, a lot of interest out in this area. Um, but like I said, I actually left my notepad, I think on my desk, so I don't have all of the notes that I took. But it looks like, uh, obviously, we can see it in the market that there's a lot of interest in the Black Hills and for, you know, housing, for businesses wanting to come out this way, so it was pretty much an overview for, for that as well, so it's pretty good. And then for the Community Health Center Board, um, uh, Lloyd's got the overview here.
First time I brought it.
The first time you brought it, um, did, uh, uh, the twenty twenty, um, the financials. We did the, uh, we, we reviewed policies, like their mitigated expansion options and what they were thinking about doing on that. Policy review, so nothing major that's gonna impact us, but, and then, um, they kind of walked through some of their policies. Um, they are looking at marijuana policies as well. It's not gonna impact us in a, in any way, shape or form. It's just more for their staff, if I remember correctly. Is that right, Lloyd? It's more for their policy of the use in staff. Um, outside of that, it was pretty, uh, pretty benign, um, meeting. Nothing major to take away from it. That's all I have for this.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Well, thanks. I got out of reporting on that one. I got one more to get out of because that was the, uh, maybe John could give us the note on the healthcare board. Yeah, that, I did, I did the Zoom in on that meeting. We did a couple of changes on it, but quite frankly, I couldn't hear half the conversation in the room. Could see for, see him and heard echoing, but couldn't understand it, but, uh, I'll definitely, what I'll do is I've, I've got the minutes. I'll send them out to the commission on my phone. I got them on, on my phone. I'll send you out the minutes after the meeting.
Ron?
Uh, the building committee, we focused on the crisis care s- stabilization facility, which, uh, plans to be available to contractors August the sixth with bid opening, uh, August the thirty-first, tentative contractor word at our BLC meeting on September the seventh. The lamplighter, we're still, uh, I mean, I think everybody's in favor of doing the demo. We just don't know who's gonna do the demo or when it's gon- when it's gonna get done. We don't wanna do the demo if we can't find somebody to come in there and, and asphalt the parking lot, because, uh, right now, anybody, what, will also have to do some concrete curb and gutters, so these folks are really backed out. Uh, J and J Asphalt, they said, you know, we could probably get in there and do that, uh, asphalt that parking lot, but he said he'd, he thought we'd be better off if we just hold off and have the demo done in the winter. And then he said, you're gonna find a lot more competitive, better pricing for asphalt, uh, next spring, so. That's, uh, the, the lamplighter property. Uh, federal ARP funds, uh, Sandy mentioned that ARP monies projects funded by need to be committed and obligated by December the thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And that that money needs to be spent by the end of two thousand twenty-six, and if you don't have it all spent, uh, we probably, whatever was not spent would, uh, we probably have to make up for it. Uh, we all agreed that we, as this, this facility will not have enough space if we see the continued growth. We're gonna, we don't know where we're gonna go or what we're gonna do, but, uh, we all agree that we need a, uh, an updated facility, needs assessment. And so we're gonna move forward, uh, with hiring the company to do another assessment, which would be similar to this facility that was done in two thousand ten, I believe. Uh, Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment, uh, it was just business as normal, but we did elect new officers. Deb Haddock will service the chair of that commission. Fred Eisenbrot will be the vice chair, uh, and Commissioner Hal Britt will be the contingency secretary and, uh, well anyhow, notes are a little sketchy, but, uh, that was pretty much, uh, the highlights of that particular meeting.
Okay. So anybody wanna say anything relative to the special planning work session?
Forgot about it.
Same, uh, Mister Chair. I do wanna, uh, our building committee that's been renamed Infrastructure Committee, we did, uh, two or three weeks ago when I went to
Committee, you mean?
Uh, we, we called it infrastructure now.
Okay, that's always renamed, not the building.
But it was, oh, excuse me, Road Committee that's been renamed Infrastructure Committee. Uh, we, I don't know Heidi's last name, but I met her, her and her mom when we went to the Mountain Meadows subdivision, and she's a research scientist for the South Dakota School of Mines and, uh, well-connected with Dan Driscoll, who, uh, isn't, you know, quite knowledgeable with the geology here, so she agreed to come to the meeting, and she did about a forty-five minute presentation on what we need to be looking at going into the future relative to infrastructure. Uh, you know, our septic system's gonna work forever. Are we gonna have enough water in the wells? And so these are things that we really need to be looking at, and, uh, they've kind of agreed to, you know, work with the, uh, uh, Planning and Insulin Department. There, you're gonna probably see different alternatives relative to septic systems and mound systems. You're gonna see small treatment plants in these higher-density residential subdivisions, and that's what, uh, she's currently working on at the School of Mines, so. We made some good connections, and I think Brittany has those, uh, resources as we move forward. I thought it was a really good presentation. Uh, we had it slated for fifteen minutes, and it actually took between forty-five and fifty minutes. It was, uh, really intense and very educational. Staff is all pro- also proposing the following cannabis marijuana steps for issuance of cannabis marijuana license in Pennington County, and those would, uh, apply to the marijuana dispensary, uh, conditional use permit, the marijuana cultivation facility, conditional use permit, the marijuana testing facility, con- conditional use permit, and the marijuana manufacturing facility, conditional use permit. So, uh, the balance of that meeting, we just basically focus on where we're, where we're gonna be when it comes time to, uh, come up with these ordinances relative to the marijuana and cannabis.
ID server ding, is there?
Right.
Anything else, Ron?
Nope, that's it.
And I have none. Didn't have any meetings, so, during that period of time, which is good, because I was going. Uh, approval of vouchers. I need a motion to approve four hundred ninety-seven thousand eighty-seven dollars and fourteen cents in vouchers.
Mayor of Tripoli.
Got a motion by Commissioner Laster, second by Commissioner Roskinak. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We do have an executive session for a personnel issue, uh, department head annual review and contractual pending litigation. Is there a motion?
Move to an executive session.
Got a motion, Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Laster, for executive session. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Ready? Take a motion to go back into regular session.
So move.
Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. John?
Commissioners, John Morrow, Pennington County Human Resources. Get my glasses out here. I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the Emergency Service Communication Center um, for one of their employees. The motion would read as follows. To move, uh, employee Audrey Metz from telecommunicator at grade B twenty-one, step seven, eighteen ninety-nine an hour to dispatcher one, grade B twenty-one, step nine, at nineteen forty-six per hour, effective August eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Is there a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner LaCroy, second by Commissioner Laster. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next one is, uh, need a motion to approve the right-of-way acquisition for the Nemo Road Curve realignment project.
So move.
PH eight oh four one twenty, PCN oh five F eight, and the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. I got a motion from Commissioner Laster. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner LaCroy. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. We're done.